Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is 5:30. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, this meeting is officially open with a quorum present. At this time, I'll move to our pledges, and they will be led by Ms. Claudia Garibay.
and greeting prior to the meeting, and I understand they are from Poly High School, and also the UIL State Cross Country Medalist. Ms. Garibay?
Thank you, President Jackson, trustees, and Dr. Ramsey. Tonight, we were greeted by the JROTC from Poly Technic High School. We have with us today Cadet Daniel Chavez, Deputy Corps Commander; Cadet Valerie Valles, Battalion Commander; Cadet Noelia Montelongo, Battalion Executive Officer; Cadet Joseph Pacheco, Battalion Commander, Sergeant Major; Cadet Erickto Flores, First Sergeant; Cadet Mariana Guereca, Battalion S2; and Cadet Victory Harris. Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you so much. And delighting us with their voices this evening is the Fort Worth ISD Dunbar High School Choir. These talented students are directed by Choir Director Bryson Robinson, Principal Justin Edwards, Director of Vocal and Elementary Music, Jessie Cannon, and Executive Director of Visual and Performing Arts, Christina Avila. Please join me as we recognize their work and dedication. Can you please stand, please?
The UIL State Cross Country Championship Meet was held November 4th and 5th in Round Rock. Fort Worth ISU was represented by three high schools, Arlington Heights, Benbrook, and Diamond Hill Jarvis. In the 5A Division, Arlington Heights Senior Chase Gunn finished 10th out of 151 runners. He earned a medal and was named All-State by the Texas Cross Country Association. Chase has signed a national letter of intent to run for the University of Louisiana at Monroe. He is coached by Lauren Rosensky, and his principal is Ms. Sarah Weeks. Join me in recognizing Chase Gunn. In the 4A Division, after finishing in 4th place in the UIL State Championship as a sophomore last year, Diamond Hill Jarvis's Angel Sanchez achieved his goal of winning a cross-country state championship. He finished the 5K course in a time of 1547. Angel was also named to the All-State by the Texas Cross Country Association. He advanced to the UIL State Championship Race by winning the Region 2 4A Boys Meet on October 25th. This is the second state championship Sanchez won in 2022. Sanchez also finished 2nd in the men's 3200 meter race in May. Sanchez's gold and silver medals marked the first time Diamond Hill Jarvis placed at the UIL State Track Championships. He also finished in 4th place at the Champ Sports Cross Country South Region Meet on November 26th in Charlotte, North Carolina, and automatically qualified for the National Championship Meet on December 10th at the famed Balboa Park in San Diego, California. And tonight, District 9 Board Member Roxanne Martinez has a special announcement.
Good evening. Tonight, on behalf of the Texas High School Coaches Association, I would like to present Anjo Sanchez with this special recognition as part of the Super Elite. Presented by the Texas High School Coaches Association, the Super Elite teams consist of high school players nominated by members of the association. Anjo is one of 10 students recognized in the state. The award recognizes student athletes across the state of Texas for their exemplary athletic achievement in their respective sport. Congratulations, Anjo, and also congratulations to his coach, Ana Rios. You have represented our district and our community well. You have demonstrated that hard work still works and pays off. We are proud of you, and I would like to present this plaque to you at this time.
Would the family and friends, coaches, and principals of the State Cross Country Medalists Our next recognition is also a celebration. We're pleased to recognize United Way of Tarrant County for investing in Fort Worth ISD for so many years. We also want to congratulate them on their centennial anniversary. Last November marked 100 years of United Way of Tarrant County helping families, including Fort Worth ISD families, achieve financial stability, address health concerns, and send children to school with the emotional and material support that allows them to thrive. Their assistance has helped support childhood literacy programs and secondary initiatives that help students prepare for college and careers. Will the representatives from United Way of Tarrant County here tonight please stand to be recognized?
Thank you for all you do. Ladies and gentlemen, January is Board Recognition Month in the state of Texas, and the Fort Worth ISD is honoring the countless contributions, passion, and support of public education exhibited every day by all of our dedicated trustees. Serving on the Fort Worth ISD Board of Education are Dr. Camille Rodriguez, District 1; President Toby Jackson, District 2; First Vice President Quinton Q. Phillips, District 3; District Wallace Bridges, District 4; Karen CJ Evans, Secretary, District 5; Ms. Anne Dar, District 6; Dr. Michael Ryan, District 7; Mr. Anael Luébanos, District 8; and Ms. Roxanne Martinez, Second Vice President, District 9. The role of a board trustee is voluntary. Trustees are responsible for multiple district functions, including governing and overseeing the school district's management, setting policies, and fostering good community relations. This year's Board Recognition Month theme is Forward Together, acknowledging collaboration among school leadership, teachers, and parents on behalf of students. Many campuses have already taken steps to recognize their board members with marquee messages and social media posts. Dear Board, we recognize that many hours of your day are spent communicating with your constituents, and you do so online and often through social media. So this year's gift is a power bank or charger with the Fort Worth ISD logo to help you stay connected. Thank you for your service. President Jackson, this concludes our recognitions. Let's give them a round of applause, please.
Thank you, Ms. Garibay. And the United Way of Tarrant County has supported our students and communities in so many ways. We couldn't let this centennial anniversary pass without expressing our appreciation, asking if our United Way representative would like to say anything, make any comments at this time. Please come forward. We'd be honored to hear from you. And I'd also like to say that Ms. Leah King would be here, but she has another meeting, and so thank you for being here. And you just have to punch the button with the person's face on it. Or you don't, you get a microphone.
I guess I feel really special now.
You are very special.
Is this on? Okay, good. Well, on behalf of United Way of Tarrant County, just want to say thank you so much. You know, I was telling someone, 100 years is quite an achievement for an organization, and certainly, United Way has evolved over the years and really changed with the times, just like the Fort Worth ISD. We're so proud to be working with you and this wonderful community to make sure that people have stability, people are able to get their tax returns done, and get money back into the community. People are able, military veterans are able to find things, you know, services that they need, as well as our aging population, and we're very excited that we'll be working on workforce development and many other initiatives with this community. So, thank you. We are just thrilled to be here and thrilled for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And at this time, we will take a maximum of a five-minute break so that each person that's been recognized tonight can come up and take a picture with the board.
So why is it only 27%? And how many of our students are actually taking the SAT and ACT?
Good question. I'll deal with the goal first. The goals were set back based on 2018-2019 data, when we were a bit lower than that, and the goal was to go up some each year. So the board at the time selected those goals based on where we were at 18% and trying to move those numbers up. Definitely, if that continues to be a goal, I know that you will look at that with Dr. Ramsey and look at all the data and determine if that's a goal that you want to set, if you want to raise that or lower it, based on where we are right now and the trend data that we see over previous years. The second part of your question, Dr. Rodriguez, was do all students take that? We offer that as a school day SAT so that every student has the opportunity to participate in the test. So while we might miss a student that's absent, in general, almost all of the students take the test.
So what percentage, like 90% or?
Yeah, I'd say 90 to 95% because they can also take it if they're a student that's really planning and needs that for college, and they were absent, they can take it on one of the Saturday administrations as well. I could get you the specific for any given year of the percent that are participating, but it's very high.
No, that's good. I'm glad our students are taking it, but if only 26% are meeting, that's not good. Thank you.
Yes.
We have some more, Toby. Trustee Luébanos and Trustee Dor.
And West Forest.
Trustee Dor, you're first.
To echo what Dr. Rodriguez just said, that 13% is not good, what are we doing about that?
So I will address that question, and then I think, you know, our counterparts here can also talk about what we're doing. So first of all, it talks about, we're talking about rigor and complexity in the classroom. And this doesn't just begin in our high schools. So recently, the board has authorized us to adopt new curriculum. And so for us, this starts in our elementary classrooms. And so we've adopted Jureka, we've adopted Carnegie, and so this is a vertical process. And Dr. Seines, I think, last month talked about aligning our systems. And so rigor and complexity, and talking about the rigor of the standard from pre-K through 12. And so we're adopting new curriculum, we're supporting our teachers with professional development, we're providing high-impact tutoring for students, and so it's aligning the system so that students are getting quality Tier 1 instruction in the classroom. We're supporting our teachers with the resources that they need in order to provide the students with the instruction that they need, and filling the gaps that COVID provided for our students. There is gaps as a result of COVID, and so we have to address not only the gaps, but the acceleration that's required as a result of COVID. But part of that is also our new mathematical framework, our new literacy framework, and putting practices in place that accelerate their learning.
Are there any, I know that there are some pockets of classes around the district, but I know that having had three kids that have taken the SAT, it's, there are some, there are some benefits to teaching kids how to take this particular test, not just the substance that is covered, not just the reading and the English and the math, but there are some tips and tricks to maneuvering the SAT and the ACT more effectively so that what they really do know actually does show up in their scores. Are we addressing that in any way?
Yes, we are. So Dr. Seines and his department in each of our high schools offers PSAT prep and ACT prep to all of our high school campuses, and so that is available for all of our students across Fort Worth ISD.
Is it optional, or is it embedded in the curriculum?
Unfortunately, it is optional, but Dr. Seines and his team do work very closely with our post-secondary specialists, and with our GO centers, and with our counselors to make that information widely available to parents and students, but right now, it is optional.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Luébanos.
Thank you. Can you go back a couple of slides, like Slide 14?
the end of ninth grade. And then the 41% of students on the beginning-of-year MAP tests were projected to earn their Algebra I credit. That's a total of 56%, so below the goal, showing progress, and we believe that will be higher. One of the benefits of having our MAP data is that we get a beginning-of-year score. Students are right now taking the middle-of-year assessment and so teachers continue to get information about what students learned already, what they're ready to learn next, and areas that they need additional support. A final goal progress measure for goal three is ACT SAT, and that's a percent of graduates. So looking at this, our goal was set at 26%. Prelimarily, we have about 13% of graduates from the class of 22 that achieved that. We know that we had a dip there in the pandemic as well. Some students did not get to take that during the pandemic when we were closed. Others had some additional learning gaps left over from some virtual instruction during the pandemic. That will be final once we receive the final file from TEA, which usually happens in May or June, so we'll report that back to you. And those are the goals by student group. So I will turn this over to my colleague, Dr. Sorenson, to talk about freshman success work.
Just one question before you move forward, if we could. Sometimes we go through these and then the questions aren't as relevant. ACT SAT, when will we expect later on, but is there a specific month that we should look for that?
We get that it's a lag because they're graduates and all those data go through TEA in case they pick the students up somewhere else. So the 13% is based on all the information we have in district. TEA will report back to us in June about that graduating class and then we'll finalize that figure.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Risby.
You're welcome.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes, on that same slide, 27% seems really low. So why is it only 27%? And how many of our students are actually taking the SAT and ACT?
Good question. I'll deal with the goal first. The goals were set back based on 2018-2019 data, when we were a bit lower than that, and the goal was to go up some each year. So the board at the time selected those goals based on where we were at 18% and trying to move those numbers up. Definitely, if that continues to be a goal, I know that you will look at that with Dr. Ramsey and look at all the data and determine if that's a goal that you want to set, if you want to raise that or lower it, based on where we are right now and the trend data that we see over previous years. The second part of your question, Dr. Rodriguez, was do all students take that? We offer that as a school day SAT so that every student has the opportunity to participate in the test. So while we might miss a student that's absent, in general, almost all of the students take the test.
So what percentage, like 90% or?
Yeah, I'd say 90 to 95% because they can also take it if they're a student that's really planning and needs that for college and they were absent, they can take it on one of the Saturday administrations as well. I could get you the specific for any given year of the percent that are participating, but it's very high.
No, that's good. I'm glad our students are taking it, but if only 26% are meeting, that's not good. Thank you.
Yes.
We have some more. Toby, trustee Luabenos, and trustee Dor.
And Wes Forrest.
Trustee Dor, you're first.
To echo what Dr. Rodriguez just said, that 13% is not good, what are we doing about
So I will address that question and then I think, you know, our counterparts here can also talk about what we're doing. So first of all, it talks about, we're talking about rigor and complexity in the classroom. And this doesn't just begin in our high schools. So recently, the board has authorized us to adopt new curriculum. And so for us, this starts in our elementary classrooms. And so we've adopted Jureka, we've adopted Carnegie, and so this is a vertical process. And Dr. Seines, I think, last month talked about aligning our systems. And so rigor and complexity and talking about the rigor of the standard from pre-K through 12. And so we're adopting new curriculum, we're supporting our teachers with professional development, we're providing high-impact tutoring for students. And so it's aligning the system so that students are getting quality Tier One instruction in the classroom. We're supporting our teachers with the resources that they need in order to provide the students with the instruction that they need and filling the gaps that COVID provided for our students. There is gaps as a result of COVID, and so we have to address not only the gaps, but the acceleration that's required as a result of COVID. But part of that is also our new mathematical framework, our new literacy framework, and putting practices in place that accelerate their learning.
Are there any, I know that there are some pockets of classes around the district, but I know that having had three kids that have taken the SAT, it's, there are some, there are some benefits to teaching kids how to take this particular test, not just the substance that is covered, not just the reading and the English and the math, but there are some tips and tricks to maneuvering the SAT and the ACT more effectively so that what they really do know actually does show up in their scores. Are we addressing that in any way?
Yes, we are. So Dr. Seines and his department in each of our high schools offers PSAT prep and ACT prep to all of our high school campuses, and so that is available for all of our students across Fort Worth ISD.
Is it optional or is it embedded in the curriculum?
Unfortunately, it is optional, but Dr. Seines and his team do work very closely with our post-secondary specialists and with our GO centers and with our counselors to make that information widely available to parents and students, but right now, it is optional.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Luabenos.
Thank you. Can you go back a couple of slides, like slide 14? So that 56% on the first graph, what is the meaning of that 56%?
Trustee Luabenos, that's the total of the 41 and the 15, so the green portion, that's 15%. That's the percent of students that came to high school or came to ninth grade already having passed their Algebra I EOC. So they most likely took that and passed it as an eighth-grade student in one of the accelerated courses. The 41% is an additional percent of students that took the beginning-of-the-year NWA MAP test for algebra and demonstrated proficiency that equated to success on the EOC. So based on their NWA score, they're projected to pass their Algebra I EOC.
So the other 44% missing in the graph are not?
Are not project, don't have it already and are not projected to pass based on beginning-of-year. So those students took that test back in early September. They've had instruction from now until, from then until now. Students are also taking the Algebra I MAP test right now. We're in the window, so we'll have new scores and see if that projection has gone up to more students meeting, and teachers will be making instructional adjustments based on that.
So what can we do in the future? That way, that 44% is smaller amount from day one and now, you know, it's almost 50% of our students are projected not to have it or to pass.
Sure, absolutely. So again, one, I will start my slides because I think that that comes in with the work that we're doing in freshman success. And so it comes down to the work that we are doing with our freshman class and our freshman teachers and our freshman team. And so the work that we do in freshman success is really grounded in this framework here, which talks about the quality of instruction, what students receive in terms of Tier One core instruction every single day. And so whether it be algebra or English One or biology, we know across the district, our students need to increase proficiency to pass their EOCs, right? And so we lean in in our freshman year because we know that if students are successful in their freshman year, the likelihood to graduate in four years increases dramatically. And so our freshman success teams are working diligently with the leadership of our freshman success coaches to lean into not only the quality instruction and what's happening in the classroom every single day, but what are the student supports? So what are the wraparound services that our students need every single day? Are they absent? Who's present? Why are they absent? What are the supports that they need in order to make sure that they're here? What are the social-emotional supports they need? What are the relationships like between teachers and students in school every single day? How do we support them feeling welcome in the school? And so we know that that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade can be difficult. And so how do we, as a freshman team, support students, freshman students, ninth-grade students, so that they are academically and socially successful, so that academics increases? There's a lot of research around this, and so I will turn it over to our freshman success coaches so that they can talk about the work that they're doing at their schools that's supported by data, to then show what the gains are at their individual schools, because if we continue to lean into this work, as you'll see in the slides, I know it's not dramatic, but there's a 12% gain across the district and also dramatic increases for African-American and Latino students in doing this work for one year. So I just want to turn it over to Angela Batts, who is the freshman success coach at Dunbar.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. As mentioned, my name is Angela Batts and I am the freshman success coach at Dunbar High School. Thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to share the work that we've been doing at Dunbar. I'm super excited to be here. So first, I'll just start it off with our campus goals. So this year, our biggest campus goal was 85% of our kids would be on track to matriculate to the next grade. And then also, our second goal was to increase the overall student experience and the teacher experience at Dunbar High School. So the ways in which we do this, we focus on three major points. So the first one is behavior, the second one is attendance, and the third one is grades. And we often refer to this as the BAG report, and the BAG report is super important because it provides us with insight to how our students are doing on a weekly basis and even daily basis. We address the BAG report almost daily with our students because we think it's very important for them to know where they stand as well. So as far as behavior, how we monitor this, we started with a backward design at Dunbar High School. We noticed that our teacher and student relationships, we were having some conflicts and there was some disconnect. So for us, we wanted to know where was this disconnect? So we started looking at referrals as a team. So we got together and we decided that, hey, we want to tier the behavior so we can make sure that the expectation across all ninth-grade classrooms are the same and so that we can get to that Tier One instruction, we wanted to make sure that we were eliminating all barriers for both our students and our teachers. So with that being said, as a team, we developed this program called the, or plan, excuse me, called the Dunbar Intervention Plan. And so what this plan does, it basically streamlines what's going on in the classroom. So teachers are able to fill out this form to give us insight to maybe some of the struggles that they're having, some of the concerns they have regarding students. And myself and the leadership team, we meet with those students to provide them with the interventions that they may need and the supports that teachers may need as well. So after implementing the Dunbar Intervention Plan on our campus, we saw a 63% decrease in campus referrals overall. So it showed that by basic interventions, we were able to really impact student outcomes and make just the classroom environment overall a positive one for both our teachers and students. That was a priority for us at Dunbar High School. The next piece or next major point that we track is attendance. So of course, it is very important to get kids to school, but it's equally as important to keep them in school, right? And so one of the things that we did, we implemented the wrong clock houses this year, and so that was very important because we wanted our kids to step on campus and instantly feel connected. So the good thing, and as you guys can probably see in the slide, we implemented the houses. The great thing about this is that our students automatically were connected to peers and teachers, so they already have mentors, they already were able to develop relationships prior to stepping foot on campus due to our FISH camp and other programs that we had centered around our houses. And it turned out to be a great outcome for us. As far as tracking their attendance this year, our current freshman class, we've had a 3% increase since the beginning of the year in our attendance, and that has been phenomenal. This time last year with our sophomore class, we were at 88%. And so this current group of sophomores, which was our first class starting with freshmen, I am proud to announce that they have increased their attendance to 92%, which is a 3% increase, but we like continuous improvement. So as long as we're getting 1% better each day, we'll take it, but the goal is to continuously get better. So making sure that students were at school was a priority for us. So we wanted to basically provide them with a platform to feel connected to their peers, and we saw tremendous outcomes with that as far as attendance. The last data point that we track is grades, but in order to address grades, you of course have to address instruction. So it was very important to us that we provided our teachers with a platform to discuss what they felt like they needed professional development on. It's one thing for us to do learning walks and identify problem areas, but it's another thing when our teachers feel comfortable enough to come to the table and say, hey, I need support with providing my SPED students accommodations, or I need support with providing EB accommodations. So having a team to feel comfortable enough to come to this table to decide what professional development opportunities they need was a priority for us. So we spent a lot of time just establishing our culture within our team to ensure that our teachers were getting the most out of their time with us as well as our students. So in our teaming, there are some things that we focus on. We conduct learning walks, we conduct culture walks. We want to see what is the interactions like between student to student, what is the interactions like with their teachers to students, what is the interaction like with students when they're in the hallways, right? So we wanted to examine and try to find some root causes to some issues that we identified through freshman success. So overall, freshman success has proven itself to be successful. We were also able to start our first freshman parent council. We thought it was important to use our parents as a first line of defense as opposed to like calling them when things aren't necessarily going as planned. We wanted them to be at the table with us, making decisions surrounding our children. So we came up with the freshman parent council, and we have a group of parents that meet monthly to discuss what's going on at Dunbar High School with their freshman students. We also give them data points for them to track themselves, and we tell them, hey, these are the most important things to look for in regards to your student ending their freshman year. So we've been able to celebrate our kids, we make sure we get them to class, into school, we celebrate their achievements, and we take them on college tours to expose them to things that they might not have seen before. Through our AVID program, we have developed mentorships with upperclassmen, and we're really seeing the freshman success be impactful on our campus. So much so, we have moved it on to sophomore success. We have provided the similar supports to our students at the sophomore level. This is our first year of sophomore success, and the teachers often brag on how great the sophomore class is due to all of the hard work we do freshman year. So we have just had tremendous outcomes for our students, and I am proud to announce that after semester one, we are currently at 88% on track, which is an 8% increase from this time last year. So we hope to finish the year that high as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And trustee, Dr. Michael Ryan had a question.
It's one on, well, there are a couple, but let's do one right now, just on the ACT, SAT, PSAT preps. Are we keeping any data on that to show how much our kids improve so we can get that out to the rest of the students in the school and the community? So maybe they'll want to enroll in those classes, too.
Dr. Ryan, I'm not certain if we are keeping data on that. It's something we certainly can look at. I think that's a great idea to help advertise that to other students and show what their colleagues did by attending the course.
Okay, I know that like if you've got a 1,200 SAT, you can go to just about any college in Texas. If you've got a 1,400, you can go anywhere in this country. And so we need to, how do we push to get kids up to that level? So if I can show that there's an increase, then it's easier for me to talk to parents and tell them, get their kids in the class, whether it's during the school year or in the summer, okay?
Thank you. We have one more from trustee Bridges.
Thank you, guys, for the presentation. I have two questions. One, do you guys have some kind of focus group from the student's perspective as to what's going well? And I'll come back with my other question later.
Yes, so in fact, we actually just conducted a student panel, and so we talked to our students. I have multiple focus groups, which sounds kind of different, but it's based off of their needs. So we meet with different groups to figure out what exactly they need. Last week, we brought freshmen into freshman success, and we had a student panel. The teachers brought questions, the students were able to ask follow-up questions, and it was just great. We were able to meet, like identify their needs and then provide interventions for them.
And I'm curious, from the student's perspective, what did they say were the, maybe the top two things that are going well?
So the things that were going well was, number one, they said they love Dunbar. It was not like their middle school, it was very different. So they weren't used to having, I mean, not lack of structure, but of course, when you go to ninth grade, it's a little bit different. It's not as tight-knit as middle school. So the lack of structure is something that they really like, and another thing they like was all their classes. They say, we work in every single class, but it makes us better. So we provide Tier One instruction across all courses.
And how did they discuss some areas of opportunity for us?
Well, they were very honest and transparent, as we like, and they told our teachers, like, hey, we don't like this, or why do you guys do that? And so it was different things. So one of the things was like working, like why do we have to work so much? We need a break in between each class. Five minutes isn't enough, right? But we were able to tell them, like, hey, guys, due to the pandemic, some of you guys have gaps, so giving you guys all of this extra free time is not ideal to where we want you to go. So we're working to close those gaps, and then in return, you'll get your time on the backend. We're just going to work really hard now.
And one last, I'm sorry, one last question. When you looked at the data, the data among African-American boys, did you see that same increase?
Yes, we have an increase overall in all of our subgroups. One of the things that we are really targeting with our African-American males at Dunbar High School is promoting achievement, so going beyond the C. The C is okay, but what are we doing to get to the A or the B, right? So that's one of our things with not only our African-American students, but also our Hispanic male students. We're seeing a lack of, I guess, achievement mindset. So that's one of the things that we are working with our community partners like MBK and other supporting interventions that we have on campus to kind of promote that achievement, like go the extra mile, why not?
So, and this really is the last question. So is it a regular, ongoing conversation that you guys are having with the students, like once a week or once every month? I don't know.
I can never talk to students only once a week. There are students in our offices every single day, so I'm interacting, my team is interacting with students on a daily basis. As far as focus groups, we do limit those to once a week during lunch, but for the most part, we're meeting with students every day. We're in the fight with them every single day.
As an educator, what's the biggest aha? Like, that was like, wow, I didn't think they would notice that about what we do around here.
I just see the importance of education, like kids want to do work. They're not afraid of the work. And if you give them the steps, and they told the teachers last week, we don't like our work to be easy, you just got to guide us a little bit and we'll get to the finish. So I just think the mindset overall has just been like, hey, if we pour into our kids, they'll pour back into us, so let's do it.
Thank you for the work, you guys.
Thank you. We have one more from trustee Evans. Yes, thank you. Were both freshman success coaches going to speak? I have a question, but it can actually wait until the end. I just wanted to not get left behind on the questions, so.
Good evening, board members. And Dr. Ramsey, we appreciate you giving us this time and this opportunity to really talk about freshman success. So I would like to talk about freshman success at Western Hills High School and the focus of the teachers first before we get into the students. So first and foremost, this is a growth mindset. This isn't just an intervention that we're just implementing, you know, day-to-day or week-to-week. This is literally a growth mindset change that is becoming our freshman success team and our teachers. And we're very proud to say that last year, we are at 80% on track and we are looking at 85% on track for this school year already with a ton of subgroup populations that are improving their scores overall. We've had the opportunity to really get involved and start providing professional learning for our teachers when they are expressing it. We've had the opportunity to bring in EL strategies, QTEL strategies for our students, for our emerging bilingual. We can see them implementing them within the classrooms. Teachers are discussing how, you know, what EL strategy are you using this week, or what did you try in coming back to the table during PLC and truly guiding through the process? What worked here? How did these students perform there? And what changes can we continuously made? Even with our SPED population groups, what's special education strategies? What modifications are we using within the classroom? We can see an increase because again, you know, Cs are great, on track, yes, but what are we pushing for our students to do Bs or better? Our EL students and our SPED students right now, 54% and 52% of them are at Bs or better, and the on-track percentages are even higher than that. Pushing them for excellence and getting them into that mindset of you can do this, yes, you're a little bit behind because you missed those two years of opportunity in middle school, but how can our teachers come together to really help and utilize that? You can see up there that we've also done a lot of restorative practices with our students. We as well have a student voice, and we have a freshman advisory council that meets twice a month. We started it last school year. Those students are actually chosen by the teachers and then also by the peers as well. So what improvements can be made, making sure that we're celebration? Yes, learning walks are great, but how are we increasing the rigor within the classroom? How are we making those differences? The grading practices, can I walk into one algebra classroom and walk into the next algebra classroom and see the same type of curriculum and engagement happening? And if that engagement's not there, are we having those critical conversations in PLC? Absolutely. Because if we're not seeing engagement across the board, how can we make those changes and have the critical conversations with one another as adults, as educators, for the better good of our students? And we're noticing those changes. I'd like to read a text message that I received this morning from a student, and she just happened to reach out out of nowhere. She didn't know I was speaking, and she goes, hey, I just wanted to let you know that freshman success has made me realize that it's okay to open up to people and let it go. My mistakes are to make me a better person and to learn, and that it's okay to make mistakes and learn from those mistakes. So our students are noticing the change. It's not just creating the buy-in, they are bought in from the changes that we have made with freshman success. Having the parents' engagement, we've got a weekly smore that we're releasing now, which has been very successful at Western Hills, to give the parents an idea of where their students are at, what their percentage of data was. Their attendance is at 91%. We need your student attendance recovery. If we have students, we're celebrating them at the same time, but how are we also getting our students in for House Bill 4545? So we can look at that map growth, we can look at those real data points, we can look at what students we need to bring in more often to see those improvements within the data.
So I will wrap up and then if there's more questions, but I just want to wrap up to say, and I know that this, you know...
But I just want to wrap up to say, and I know that this, you know, was a long answer to your question. But, you know, it's a trajectory. And it starts with us doing good work, you know, throughout their continuum. But we have freshman success coaches in all of our high schools. And this is not an initiative. This is a way of doing school. And this is a way of supporting our students holistically, academically, as well as socially. So we want to make sure that we're doing good work with our students in the classroom and outside of the classroom and that we're doing great work with our teachers inside the classroom, in professional learning communities, and supporting them with their practice. So we'll open it up for additional questions, if there are any.
Trustee Bridges?
This really is the last question. Have you guys noticed in tracking your parent engagement, are you seeing an increase?
Yes, absolutely. It was incredible. We released our first smore at the beginning of this semester. And I wish I would have done it, like, way earlier. And the amount of phone calls in general of seeing their students being celebrated. And it's the positive conversations. But it's also opening up critical conversations of questions of parents. Like, how can they be more involved in their students' education? And really starting to improve events, like, they want to do more in-person events and getting more involved in general with our freshman class and hoping that they're more successful post-secondary. Absolutely.
Trustee Evans?
Well, thank you all for your presentation. I am so happy to have a better idea of what our freshman success coaches do. Happy to hear about the three percent increase in attendance at Dunbar and the parent engagement through the freshman parent council. And at Western Hills, being eighty-five percent on track. That is wonderful. And the parent engagement night at Western Hills. So thank you all so much for sharing with us and keep up the good work. The question I have is about our goals overall and is for administration. When are we getting an update on our elementary reading numbers?
We will have, we're doing map testing, as I said, right now. That's part of goal one. And so you've probably noticed a pattern that we do goal one, two, three. So we'll be back to goal one. We strategically put it so we would have those middle-of-year numbers for you. So that should come in February.
Okay. You know, going back to the ACT, SAT, GPM, where we know we can improve, you know, I wonder what percentage of those seventy-four kids who didn't pass the ACT weren't reading on grade level. And, you know, as Dr. Sworson reminds us, it is a trajectory. And I just know that third-grade number is so important and so key on that overall trajectory. I know, you know, if we're going in a one, two, three pattern, could we maybe have a reminder or a more regular update on goal one, seeing as how it so directly affects the other two?
Currently, we're doing that based on when we get new map data. But if there are other pieces of that that we could update on more regularly, we certainly will be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you all.
Trustee Phillips?
Thank you, President Jackson. Thank you to both of you for the work that you're doing. I just met you. I assume you're working hard, but thank you for the presentation, right? And then Coach and Principal Edwards, just, I'm always screaming about the work that y'all are doing because y'all are amazing. Y'all work incredibly hard to try to make sure that our students are having everything they're needing in order to succeed. So I'm very grateful for this work. So I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask each of you, kind of in the same spirit of what trustee Bridges was asking a moment ago, you're doing the focus groups, you're talking and interacting with students daily. You're, and clearly, we're putting some great measures in place through freshman success and even going into sophomore success, particularly Dunbar. But in these interactions, when we're seeing the numbers that trustee Webenos alluded to, forty percent upwards of those who were not reaching that success that we're looking at, what in your estimation are the real obstacles or the biggest obstacle or barrier that's keeping those others? I know we talk about attendance, we talked about several other measures. But as you're having these interactions, where is that thing where it's like, this is what's happening that's making the others that are not hitting that mark? This is the obstacle that's in place. This is the barrier. What are y'all seeing there?
Clearly, between the last two years, the learning gaps, that's obviously probably the biggest obstacle right now. At least at Western Hills, it is. But our students need that relationship and that rapport. And I would say personally, on our campus, our students need that love and that care and knowing that they can do this. It's just a matter of who's giving them their support with it. And what can we do to help to support them? And it's incredible to start to see the changes of the mindsets of the students. Because once you change the mindset of the adults, it replicates and it becomes a pattern. And just having that support in general and knowing that each student, our goal as a freshman team is to make sure that each student has one adult that they at least can go to and confide in and have those critical conversations. And we always start out with the critical conversation is, what is your goal post-high school? What is your plan? How are we going to get there? And what resources can we provide? And that's where, you know, maybe that goes to the GO Center or the post-secondary specialist. Perhaps that's getting the student involved in dual credit or what TSI are they going to take? So it opens up a whole door and it starts with just a conversation, in my opinion. So, and I don't know if you want to add?
In addition to what she said, I think one of the biggest things that I became aware of was the awareness in general. Like, for instance, our ninth graders take the PSAT. But do you guys know why you take the PSAT? Do you know what we're looking for? So just sitting down with them and just like bringing awareness to things. Like, they don't necessarily have people that have time to just sit down and say, "Well, this is like the PSAT and this is what's on it and this is how to prepare for it." So I think a lot of it is just pouring into them, showing them like, hey, you can do this. This is what to look for and just bringing awareness to them. But also, there are other barriers to their education, right? So identifying those and providing them with the necessary supports is super critical as well. But I think awareness was the first thing that was critical for me. Because once I talked to ones, one, I realized, oh, you guys really don't know this, right? So just making them aware, making them aware of their data. We present their data to them. This is you, right? You're more than a number, but guess what? You can dictate this number. So what are we going to do? We're growing in every aspect. That's the goal at Dunbar High School.
Thank you very much for that. And so finally, for me, I would say, to Dr. Ramsey, I know that, again, you still, I guess, technically quote-unquote new. So when we're getting these reports, a lot of times, this is information you're just now getting privy to. I mean, of course, you get a lot of this data behind the scenes, but kind of the comprehensive aspect of it. So as you see these numbers, you see kind of where we're on track, where we're not. Kind of just want to give you room to speak a little bit to where we are. What are you thinking when you come across this?
So we provided, and we'll continue to have the conversations on Lone Star Governance Goals and our progress measures to the board. What we've discussed as a team of ten is that we need to find the areas where our children need the most help and prioritize those areas. So being very specific about the places where our students aren't getting what they need. And then backwards planning, what supports does each school need? What barriers do we need to remove so that we can make it so? We've had conversations with our principals and EDs about the move from central office. So by the time we move into summer, early fall, we will be district service center. So we will exist to provide service and support to our campuses. What we heard tonight is a support already in place. But I think I also heard it's going so well that we need to do this at other grade levels. I will tell you that I heard from students in my student advisory, they talked a lot about how helpful this was, but they also said, "Push it down. We need to hear that in middle school because then I'm not prepared. I need to know in elementary school or my younger siblings need to know where I am so that they can create their own personal goals and we can track and help them." So having individual learning plans for each student in the district and goals that you're working on. Every human, if we have goals that we're working on and we have check-ins and we can build capacity of our parents to have agency to come and ask, "How can I be a partner in this?" And then, again, we continue to build that capacity at our campuses, we'll start to have that momentum. So I think that the courage for the team of ten to decide we have to hit the priorities in the areas where there's the most need, be honest about, our kids currently are not receiving the education they deserve across the city. Because if we don't own that, then we can't move forward to improve. And that isn't a shame. And it isn't to say that our staff, both support staff and teachers and administrators, aren't doing amazing work on the campuses. But we need to get healthier as an organization and we need to be smarter about focusing in on those areas of need. So we'll continue, definitely, next month, we'll be talking to the board about those particular, whether we want to call them key performance indicators, so KPIs, and leading towards a strategic plan for the school district that's inclusive. So having our community say, "These are the things that we want the school district to work on." Because it's all, the end of the day, we want academic excellence, athletic excellence, artistic excellence. And we have, we want children and families to feel like they belong in our school district. And so we'll continue to work on that. The specificity has to be there. And it's coming from looking at the data and not things that we think or feel, but what the data actually says.
Thank you, Dr. Ramsey. Thank you, President Jackson.
Thank you. Trustee Dar will be followed by trustee Rodriguez and finally trustee Martinez. You guys just go ahead.
Thank you, President Jackson. To our freshman success coaches, your energy and your passion for what you do is palpable. And I know that that carries over into the way that you interact with your students and the way that your students interact with you. And so thank you for bringing that, bringing the mojo to school and bringing it and making sure that every kid feels like they are a part of something and every kid has control over who they choose to be. Because it is a choice in many ways. So thank you for that. My, I also would like to say, I appreciate the fact that you addressed the need to provide these services not just to Gen Ed students, but every student's a Gen Ed student. Some students need additional supports. And so I appreciate the fact that these freshman success initiatives are also reaching our students that have qualified for special education and 504 services. My only question was, hey, this is a good thing. How can we get it into some lower grades? And so Dr. Ramsey already addressed that. You don't need to, but I know some middle school kids that could use some of these supports as well. And I'm glad that we're looking into that and making sure that all of our kids are learning and growing in middle school so that they're even more prepared for high school. So thank you. Oh, sorry. All right, sorry. Okay, I'm glad to hear that they're all in all our high schools and go Dunbar Wildcats. But how are they, are they all successful across the district for the nine, these ninth-grade programs?
Some are more successful than others. We track their data every six weeks. We do six-week cycles. We also look at their bag reports, behavior, attendance, grades, every week. There's a bag report that's available for every freshman success coach, principal, assistant principal, executive director, and my team who leads this work. So where we have pockets that need support, we lend support. I have a team that goes out weekly and works with specific teams. So yes, I mean, it is working across the district, but there are some schools where it is working better than others. This is a part of our partnership with the Network for College Success. And so we have also created Data Champions. So there are some freshman success coaches that are more data adept than others. And so they're a really strong network amongst themselves of freshman success coaches. So they also reach out to each other for ideas, data capacity, so on and so forth. But where there's spaces that need more support, we lend it.
Okay, and do these coaches have coaches or have some?
Yep, they sure do. We meet with them monthly. But they also have an administrator that is assigned on their campus. And then they also meet with their coaches from the Network for College Success.
Okay, great. And then the next one is this little housekeeping. Y'all use a lot of acronyms and I have no idea what y'all are talking about sometimes. So if you can just say what they are and then you can go on to use them.
Absolutely, thank you. I appreciate the feedback.
I want to first piggyback on what trustee Dar said about getting these supports in earlier grades. We know it is much needed. Just in speaking to a couple of different counselors this week at different campuses at the high school level, some of them shared that we have students that enter high school with learning disabilities that have yet to be diagnosed. What supports do we have in place, not only for those students, but for the educators and counselors that are trying to catch these students up? How do we meet their needs?
Are you talking about with learning disabilities?
Yeah, we say they get to the ninth grade and the counselors are realizing that they have not been screened or diagnosed at that point. And so they're entering their freshman year needing those type of supports.
So I think that that's just a counselor emailing Dr. Carter and getting that process started. There are DIAGs that are assigned to every single campus. And so it's also getting in contact with the DIAG. If they're unfamiliar with who the DIAG for that particular campus is, they can reach out to Dr. Carter, you know, Corey Gollum or myself. And we'll get them in contact and then we can walk them through those processes.
Okay, great. Yeah, can you talk a little bit, just specifically more about the restorative practices and behavioral interventions that are utilized?
Do you want to hear from me or them?
Yeah, I was going to say, I can hear from the coaches themselves.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. So we actually started restorative practices on our campus this school year. And it started with our teachers because our teachers are not familiar how to run a restorative circle. So we decided to bring it in, not just to get to know one another, but to be able to utilize it within the classroom, whether that's relationship building or curriculum-based. So we brought it in at the beginning of the school year. And it's incredible just to see, we start our PLC every single time with a restorative circle. And we've actually gotten to know each other even more, which helps to build a culture between us. But then the teachers are actually going into the classroom now as well, doing restorative circles within the classroom. We have particular teachers that have used it to get immediate feedback from the students. What do the students need to improve upon? And the students are starting to take ownership and accountability for their own learning by identifying what their needs are within the classroom. And then in turn, the teacher as well starts to identify maybe what their needs are or what their changes need to happen instructionally to help better prepare the students. So it's opened up a whirlwind of conversations. We have a restorative circle group from our freshman academy councils, which is a group of about fifteen of our ninth graders. And we do a restorative circle once a month. And then we also do a leadership and team-building activity as well with restorative practice coaches. So it's made a huge impact, not just with the adults, but with the students taking ownership and accountability as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, who identifies the students to participate in the restorative practices?
So it actually depends on what the area of concern is. So if we are looking at the freshman council was chosen by their peers and as well as teachers to start. And those are the ones that we meet with consistently all the time. But then within the classroom, we started holding what we call kid talks from the success college. And we end up bringing it in. If it's behavior, then we start, you know, gauging conversation with restorative circles with behavior. If it's attendance, then we start having conversations. What might be going on at home that's preventing you from coming to school? So it's more of a, you know, personal level of a conversation. But then that's also where students start to identify, well, I'm not the only one here that's having these struggles. And then they start mending relationships with one another and supporting each other as well.
So if there's some conflict among the students?
Yes, yes, yeah, we just circled the other day. So they're, but they are also starting, they want to do the circles. So that's something that they look forward to. When is our next circle? You know, who's going to do circles? So we implement a circle in each content area each week. So if it's math week, then they know that they're going to do a circle in math. Or if it's science. Or if it's science, so we've started that, that calendar with them.
And you said, I'm sorry, the same students?
Nope, they're all different students. They're all different students. We have one core group that we meet with all the time and we do a lot of the team building and leadership exercises. And they're the student voice for the freshmen, but in general, we're using it across the board.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Great presentation. We're up to the board committee and superintendent update, written reports. We'll move number five, board committee report, written report only.
May I make a comment?
Please.
Actually, it's a correction. First of all, I would like to thank the Dr. Ramsey and the leadership team for including this in our board book and as a part of our agenda. Because I think this is an excellent step toward transparency in order to make sure that the general public knows what the work, the work that these committees are doing. Under the legislative committee, it says that the committee met via Zoom on January 4th. All trustees were present. All trustees were not present at that meeting. All of the trustees that serve on that committee were present, but not all of the trustees. So I just want to make sure that it's not misunderstood that it, that all nine of us were there. So if we could just, I don't know, correct that, however that gets corrected or?
I will clean up that language and I will clean it up for the next. I, I will be clear in how I write that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. But thank you for including this report. And while I have the microphone, thank you also for including the superintendent update report. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments, Dr. Ryan?
Before we go to audience comments, could I request a, about a two-minute recess, please?
Legal recess? Okay. Absolutely. Just wanted to clarify, the board will take a two-minute legal recess. We'll go into the back.
Thank you all for waiting while we took our brief recess. At this time, we will hear public comment. Thanks to each of you for being here. We will address items on this agenda as well as items of a general nature or topics not specifically listed on the agenda. Please allow me to remind you that because of restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and we will take notes, but this board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any specific... I'm sorry, excuse me. Any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with: 1. A statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry; 2. Recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry; or 3. Direct the person to visit with staff about the issue. While our board listens to concerns of a general nature, speakers should practice normal rules of decorum. Vulgar language and profanity will not be tolerated, as this is a public meeting and our students are watching. Additionally, disruptions of the meeting will not be tolerated. We ask the audience to refrain from interrupting speakers and playing audio recordings while they present to the board. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. Per Board Policy BED Local, to allow everyone the opportunity to speak, no presentation may exceed two minutes unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. As soon as the speaker begins speaking, the time clock to your left, which is my right, or our right, will start. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. Also this evening, some individuals would like to voice their opinions but are unable to physically attend. Those written statements were shared with this board of trustees prior to this meeting and will not be read aloud during the board meeting. It is essential to gain as much public input as possible, and we understand that together we are stronger and build better solutions when we maximize public input. I ask that you please observe these rules for the purpose of effectively accomplishing the business of the meeting in a timely manner. And I'd ask now our board counsel to read a brief statement.
Thank you, Board President Jackson. The Board of Trustees would like to first and foremost thank everyone who signed up to speak tonight in public comments. In reviewing the topics the community signed up for, the district noticed an interest in the district's HealthSmart Sex Ed curriculum. Therefore, the district will take this opportunity to clarify and inform the public that there is no item on the agenda for action tonight on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. I will call the speakers up three at a time. The first speaker is Miki Hooper, who we followed by Lillian Doze, who will be followed by Anthony Chance.
Hello, I'm Dr. Miki Hooper, OB-GYN, Fort Worth, Texas. I've been here in practice for 21 years. I attended Fort Worth ISD and graduated from Western Hills High School. My great-grandfather was JP-
Thank you all for waiting while we took our brief recess. At this time, we will hear public comment. Thanks to each of you for being here. We will address items on this agenda as well as items of a general nature or topics not specifically listed on the agenda. Please allow me to remind you that because of restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and we will take notes, but this board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any specific... I'm sorry, excuse me. Any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with: 1. A statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry; 2. Recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry; or 3. Direct the person to visit with staff about the issue. While our board listens to concerns of a general nature, speakers should practice normal rules of decorum. Vulgar language and profanity will not be tolerated, as this is a public meeting and our students are watching. Additionally, disruptions of the meeting will not be tolerated. We ask the audience to refrain from interrupting speakers and playing audio recordings while they present to the board. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. Per Board Policy, BED Local, to allow everyone the opportunity to speak, no presentation may exceed two minutes unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. As soon as the speaker begins speaking, the time clock to your left, which is my right or our right, will start. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. Also this evening, some individuals would like to voice their opinions but are unable to physically attend. Those written statements were shared with this board of trustees prior to this meeting and will not be read aloud during the board meeting. It is essential to gain as much public input as possible, and we understand that together we are stronger and build better solutions when we maximize public input. I ask that you please observe these rules for the purpose of effectively accomplishing the business of the meeting in a timely manner. And I'd ask now our board counsel to read a brief statement.
Thank you, Board President Jackson. The Board of Trustees would like to first and foremost thank everyone who signed up to speak tonight in public comments. In reviewing the topics the community signed up for, the district noticed an interest in the district's HealthSmart Sex Ed curriculum. Therefore, the district will take this opportunity to clarify and inform the public that there is no item on the agenda for action tonight on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. I will call the speakers up three at a time. The first speaker is Miki Hooper, who we followed by Lillian Doze, who will be followed by Anthony Chance.
Hello, I'm Dr. Miki Hooper, OB-GYN, Fort Worth, Texas. I've been here in practice for 21 years. I attended Fort Worth ISD and graduated from Western Hills High School. My great-grandfather was JP Elder. He was former superintendent of the Fort Worth schools. My condolences for the Pasco High School student that was shot. Every life is precious. Thank you, board members, for rescinding the vote on the Sex Ed curriculum and planning to begin the process over for the selection of the new Sex Ed curriculum. The Sex Ed curriculum is close to my heart. As an OB-GYN, community member, mother, and grandmother, I feel there are better curriculum choices than HealthSmart. I would like to be a resource to help you vet or review curriculums as well as sexual health resources that are offered to our students. I would like to connect to decision-makers, and I'm interested in personally meeting with board members to discuss medical aspects of age-appropriate content, clinical data, pregnancy rates, STD treatment, and et cetera, other healthcare needs. I am also available to answer questions from an expert in the medical field of OB-GYN to bring my perspective. I will email you on how to reach me. I will continue to follow along with adoption of this process and hope to see positive outcomes for Fort Worth ISD. Again, thank you for rescinding that vote on the HealthSmart curriculum. I have confidence you will move forward with a Sex Ed curriculum that reflects our conservative Fort Worth values. I pray God will give you wisdom in making future decisions. And I agree with your earlier statement, focus on areas of need for academic excellence. I had a great education from the Fort Worth ISD, and I'm so proud to be a member here. Thank you.
Lillian Doze will be followed by Anthony Chance, who will be followed by Amy Curry.
Hello, my name is Lillian Doze, and I'm a sophomore at Young Women's Leadership Academy. In June 2022, I organized and led the March For Our Lives in Fort Worth rally with 1,000 people in attendance. This is my opinion editorial that I sent to the Star Telegram on Sunday. Enough is enough, Fort Worth. We have to act now to protect our children. On Friday around 4:00 PM on West Berry Street, two teens were shot, one killed. Students want bold, comprehensive policies to prevent gun violence. Gun violence remains the biggest threat to public safety in Fort Worth. Fort Worth ISD leaders must act to protect students. Prioritize mental health screenings and awareness. Teach conflict resolution methods. Create and maintain gun-free campuses. Firearms are the leading cause of death for young people in the United States. The student-led National Organization March For Our Lives advocates to end gun violence. Government officials need to respond to this public health emergency. Our school leaders and communities need to come together to end this epidemic. We still march.
Anthony Chance will be followed by Amy Curry, who will be followed by Jerry Balkenbush.
Hello, my name is Anthony Chance. I'm here representing North Texas Youth Football Association as well as Riverside Youth Association. I have been a youth coach for the past 35 years. I'm pretty sure you all are familiar with the coach getting killed at the youth football game. These are some of the things that have been warning our community about what's going on on our campuses. For the past 10 years, we have developed a win-of-all-costs mentality. Currently, you do not have to have any form of training to start up a youth association. I am currently working with legislators so we can... Excuse me. So we can devise some rules and regulations. I'm asking Fort Worth ISD to put some common sense rules in place. 1. No games on campuses without police. 2. All youth associations must be 501(c) and incorporated. 3. All players and participants must be insured. Currently, none of these rules are being followed. There have been three incidents in the last six to seven years. The environment at the youth events is out of control with drinking, smoking, drugs, gang mentality. There are a ton of things. Now, I've told you about the things that I see wrong. Here are some suggestions that I hope that you guys will listen to. 1. All high schools should have a youth coordinator. A youth coordinator that'll go between the high schools and the community. We currently have nothing in place for our elementary school kids. We cannot continue to wait to 7th grade to introduce athletics to our children. We must invest now. I have been proposing these things for the last 20 years. I'm normally not a political person. I'm a doer, working in the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Amy Curry will be followed by Jerry Balkenbush, who will be followed by Kenya Alu.
Good evening. Many families are fleeing Fort Worth ISD. In fact, I saw a national graphic on the news recently with the top three areas of the country losing public school students. They are California, Pennsylvania, and Fort Worth. Two of those are states. Fort Worth ISD is hemorrhaging students because our district is failing to educate them. Recently, I became aware of the Sex Ed curriculum, HealthSmart. I was shocked to learn the many hoops to jump through to review it. I had to make an appointment in the middle of my workday, drive 20 minutes, and it took me two hours and I only saw the 6th grade materials. To say I was alarmed by what I saw is an understatement. One slide included a graphic, spread eagle vagina, that diagrammed the anus, clitoris, cervix, labia, and urethra. The curriculum also included a diagram of a penis pointing down prostate, testes, vast deferens, and cowper's glands. Is this information appropriate for 11- and 12-year-olds to learn at their developmental age? The words in the glossary were on level of pre-med students. Worse than the college-level terms was the anti-science language. These included gender identity, cisgender, pansexual, and transgender. Why is Fort Worth ISD tangled with the most polarizing topic of our culture when you are failing to effectively teach our students reading and math? It is shockingly difficult for parents to review this information. In 2021, you promoted the bond with a vengeance. I received texts, emails, and robo-calls encouraging my vote yes. Presentations were commonplace. Parents in this district deserve to have easy access to this information. If you have the technologies to promote what you want parents to see, why are you not making use of this topic? What do you have to hide? The devil dances in the darkness. It's clear that you are purposefully sneaking this in, in the darkness. I'm thankful HealthSmart has been tabled while you legally go through the process of getting community support, but I don't understand why this would be purchased on an eight-year contract when the state of Texas offers curriculum that checks all the boxes of the teaks and isn't controversial.
Jerry Balkenbush will be followed by Kenya Alu, who will be followed by Scott Blanco-Davis.
Hello, Dr. Ramsey and the board. My name is Jerry Balkenbush. I'm also a United States veteran. I've been a public school teacher for 16 years, most of that at Grand Prairie ISD at Truman Middle School. I did write to you about a couple of weeks ago. I've been having trouble getting employment again at Fort Worth ISD. In 2007, I resigned without giving notice, and that I regret and I'm sorry. I was dealing with depression and anxiety at that time, and I resigned from Carter Riverside. And I regret that, as I wrote to you. I just recently resigned from Grand Prairie just to kind of take my own sabbatical to work on my mental health again after 13 years. And then I applied for Fort Worth ISD because I wanted to be here, part of the community. But I had a couple of really great interviews at Trimble Tech with another guy named Alexander Seltzer. He actually was going to hire me. But they found out that in 2007, I still cannot get a job at Fort Worth ISD because I resigned early. I asked for this to be removed. It hasn't. I just asked that you, Dr. Ramsey, that you just hear my story out and that we can talk sometime. I'm one of the most diverse teachers. I just feel that I should get a second chance because I know that you guys are hiring teachers from Mexico City, which I don't have a problem with. I think that's great. I am actually very liberal. But at the same time, I am a veteran and would like to get a second chance working with Fort Worth ISD. And I know sometimes you just need a face to see with, and hopefully we can talk and we can get this. But again, I just want to say you will never find a great, great, diverse teacher, and I just hope to get a chance here with Fort Worth ISD, as I did in Grand Prairie. And if you just read my recommendations, sometimes they will prove that. Thank you, guys, and have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you. Kenya Alu will be followed by Scott Blanco-Davis, who will be followed by Katherine Pampa.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kenya Alu, and I'd like to speak on the Consent Agenda 9D on approving the Memorandum of Understanding with Ohio State University Community and Youth Collaborative Institute. I would urge the board to decline to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with Ohio State University and Youth Collaborative Institute. This pilot program is experimenting on minorities and those who are economically disadvantaged. These students need classroom instruction time in reading, writing, and arithmetic rather than time wasted on experimental surveys. On the Memorandum of Understanding, it says, quote, "The Community and Youth Collaborative Institute and the Fort Worth Independent School District, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, and a legally constituted independent school district located in Tarrant County, Texas, are joining to collaborate on the evaluation of a pilot program at Young Men and Young Women's Leadership Academies." What is this reference to political subdivision of the state of Texas? That language is concerning from a publicly funded school. Also of great concern is the district's intent to sell the data they collect on students. Surveys have no place in our school and I urge you to decline approval. Since I have a little bit more time, I'll address the HealthSmart curriculum that is not on the agenda tonight, but no doubt will be again in the future. I think it's a great idea to take the Dr. OB-GYN over here up on her offer to help consult you. This curriculum is anti-science, and I think the community deserves transparency in what is really going on with your instruction inside the classrooms. Thank you.
Scott Blanco-Davis will be followed by Katherine Pampa, who will be followed by Mia Morales.
Good afternoon, Dr. Ramsey and the board. I put this paper up there, if you would. If you could look at it, please. And I would like you to put in your mind what grade level, if you had a child or if it was you, what grade level you'd like to see that at. I wish I could ask you to hold up your hands. I kind of know, but the lowest I've had today is someone told me 3rd grade, everybody else says 5th. I want you to know that is the reading that requires comprehension and writing for a 1st-grade bilingual classroom. I've talked to you all about teacher retention. This leads into one of the things that many of my friends, when they talk to me, have left the classroom about: unrealistic expectations. There's a difference between rigor and setting the bar so high the kids give up and hate reading. And the teachers feel that. We have scripted programs. And I understand, we want to bring the lowest teachers up. How about we train them? Give them a mentor? Show them what really good teaching looks like? Because I can tell you, on the opposite side, teaching is an art. And when you do a scripted program, and you do it so well that you have directors coming down to check where teachers are, or are they on Lesson 1, Section 2? This is a 30-minute... 30-minute... Look at the top, 30 minutes for first graders to get that orally read with a teacher. We can't stand to see our kids go through that. Now, I can tell you, a scripted program is like asking Michelangelo to paint by numbers. A good teacher just can't do that. It's an art. And when you take away the art and the fun of teaching, you get the reading scores we have now, because the kids just don't like it.
Katherine Pampa will be followed by Mia Morales, who will be followed by Talia... I believe it's De La Cruz, but it says Zayla Cruz.
Good evening. I'm a Fort Worth ISD parent, nurse of 23 years, and newly-appointed SHAC member. After reviewing the HealthSmart Sex Ed curriculum for middle and high school, I've come to the conclusion this curriculum should not be used in Fort Worth ISD. In the curriculum, gender identity ideology is woven throughout all lessons and includes terms and graphic images that may not be appropriate for children. This curriculum denies scientific truth and does not rightly teach how sex is determined at conception, but instead promulgates politicized language that sex is arbitrarily assigned by another human at birth. In science textbooks, a child will learn facts such as how sex is determined at conception by our chromosomes. Gender identity ideology prioritizes a mental perception over a bodily reality. This causes confusion in the name of inclusion, which is disingenuous and a tactic for indoctrination. This can and has led to real harm, especially for girls who've been sexually abused by males, losing their safe spaces such as locker rooms, along with lost scholarships and opportunities in sports to their biological counterparts. For children with gender dysphoria, affirming an identity that does not align with their biology may solidify their dysphoria, leading to permanent bodily mutilation, sterility, reliance on lifelong drugs, further psychological harm, and suicide. The portion of the brain responsible for processing long-term consequences does not mature until the mid-20s. How can one expect adolescents to have maturity to appreciate future implications of this confusing teaching and where it leads? The vast majority of children who have gender dysphoria will end up accepting their bodies if puberty takes its natural course. Be a part of encouraging children to embrace how wonderfully they were created. Would you encourage an anorexic person to diet? Can your feelings change your age and height? Truth matters. Evidence-based teaching matters. Fort Worth ISD kids all matter. I urge you to find an alternative that will teach kids basic facts.
Tyne, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Ramsey and respective board members. My name is Mia Morales, and I'm a sophomore at the Young Women's Leadership Academy. I'm a public relations coordinator for our LULAC, League of United Latin American Citizens, Fort Worth Youth Council. I'm here that you listen to the students. Fort Worth ISD is suffering from a loss. What happened in our Pasco community? It affected all of us. Gun violence is a threat to our city and schools. In a state where it's easy to access a gun, we are not safe. I'm here to implore that you implement measures that will prevent such horrific tragedies. I don't doubt that Fort Worth ISD does everything in its power to make us safe, but we need more bold actions. Every school should have comprehensive mental health screenings and provide educational awareness. Every school should be equipped with the resources that facilitate crisis assistance to students that need it. Some of our schools don't even have nurses. You may not have the power to change gun laws in our state, but you have the power to make our schools safe, trusting, and supportive environments. When communities are focused on a student's well-being, schools can be places of care, compassion, the challenges students face. So many grown-ups want to speak for us, but I stand before you to reject all those that feel the well-being that doesn't matter in the classroom. I encourage each one of you to speak to your students in your district. Dr. Ramsey, consider having a student town hall. Please don't dismiss us. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Talia De La Cruz will be followed by Holly Plemons, who will be followed by Caleb Backholm.
Good evening, board. I would like to start off by saying thank you for not moving forward with the adoption of HealthSmart. However, the lack of transparency still exists. Parents shouldn't have to beg you to see a curriculum. As parents, it is our constitutional right to see what you're presenting to our kids. We're here to stay. It's sad to know that you were actually going to bring in a curriculum to sexualize our students. You have awakened a sleeping giant. We're paying attention. We're watching your votes. We're watching your donations, and we will remove anyone that refuses to listen to parents and elect those who won't abuse their power. We're holding each and every one of you accountable for hurting our children's innocence. God bless you.
Holly Plemons will be followed by Caleb Backholm, who will be followed by Umberto Neves.
Holly Plemons, mom of three, taxpayer in Fort Worth ISD. I want to talk to you guys about Consent Agenda Item D. It's the MOU with Ohio State for the survey. I first want to start out with the Sid Richardson Foundation. The president of that is Pete Guerin, and he has been donating to some of your campaigns. So please keep that... So please keep that in mind when this comes up to vote. The problem that I have with this is that you are getting a parent's permission, and I'm super appreciative of that. My issue is, at these two schools, we've got 79.4% low-income, 73% low-income, 94.4% non-white minorities, 86.9% non-white minorities. These parents are low-income. They don't have the time to dig into this agenda, to read the survey questions. The survey questions are... There's 105 questions. This is missed instruction time in class. And we had to extend our school day because you guys think that the kids need more time in school, but then you give them a 105-page questionnaire. And this questionnaire, it has a lot of questions in it I'm not happy about. But the biggest thing here is it says the teachers say that, in the little teacher survey section, is that they're supposed to tell the students that their answers are confidential and appropriate at this time. And it says your answers will not be linked to you. You guys can look in the MOU that was attached to your Consent Agenda item, and you can see clearly that it states in here that the student's name, their ID, and there's something else that links back to the student. And then also, if the parents give consent for this, it is going to give them that same data from last year... Oh, it was discipline records. And so I'm going to read you a couple of the questions that I find the most egregious. Have you ever lied about something important? Have you ever bullied someone at school?
Time. Thank you.
Thank you. Caleb Backholm will be followed by Umberto Nevarrez, followed by Stephanie Nevarrez.
Hi, I'm Caleb Backholm. I am running for Fort Worth City Council, but today I'm talking about an issue for the school district. I'm the father of three and a seminary student down at Southwestern. The reason I point that out is because the sex ed curriculum you were considering is teaching religion, not biology, and it's teaching it wrongly. So the content in question that I'm talking about states that one's gender might not be the same as the created sex of your body. In other words, the true you, or your soul in theology, can have a different identity than your body does. However, Christianity teaches that body and soul are inseparably linked as one being. We don't have a body and a soul. We are a body and soul. As the triune God is three-in-one, we are also a body and a soul in one being. That is our indivisible, God-given identity. This means you cannot have a gender identity or a soul that is different from the gender of your body. The sex of your body is your gender. It is assigned by God and cannot change. Thus, there is no such thing as truly transgender. There is no such thing as non-binary. So this discussion around identity is not physical science, but a religious discussion. And all teaching about this is theological instruction. Now, I support teaching theology to our students, but if it will be taught, it needs to be taught correctly. But you might say to me that this is not the proper role of the Fort Worth ISD to teach basic Christian doctrine in our public schools. To which I would respond, if it's not the ISD's role to teach basic Christian doctrine in our schools, in what sense is it the ISD's role to attack basic Christian doctrine in our schools? It isn't. But this is what that curriculum does. It openly opposes the doctrines of the sovereignty of God and the unity of body and soul. These are huge issues in Christian church. Most families in Fort Worth come from this tradition, and I assume that some of you do too. We do not wish to send our children to school to see the fundamentals of our faith undermined in the classrooms. Any curriculum that teaches this one-sided theology should be rejected in Fort Worth public schools. We will be very grateful if you do so, that teaches this false theology and not teach it in our schools. Thank you very much.
Umberto... Umberto Nevarrez will be followed by Stephanie Nevarrez, will be followed by Abraham Nevarrez.
Okay, hello, Board. My name is Umberto Nevarrez. I'm here to speak on the behalf of many people that cannot be here today. I'm here to say we do not want HealthSmart in our schools. My question to the Board is, how did this curriculum even get to our classrooms in the first place? Did you not see the curriculum before it was released to be taught in our schools? Or were you told to adopt it? We see all around us an agenda that is being played out to rob the innocence of children, and I wonder if you are also playing part in this. It's hard to question if you are, since we know the origins of sexual education. For those who don't know, sexual education was started by the ideologies of Margaret Sanger, a eugenicist, Alfred Kinsey, a pedophile, and Hugh Hefner, a pornographer. Those people have been founders of sexual education. If you guys didn't know, the pedophile Alfred Kinsey established an institute called Kinsey Institute in Indiana. The person who wrote the sex ed curriculum, HealthSmart, was a student at Kinsey Institute. After knowing this, how can you tell us that HealthSmart is age-appropriate and safe? It is neither of those. What we are asking is simple: educate our kids, don't sexualize them. Remove HealthSmart. Instead of indoctrinating our children, teach them real-life skills that'll set them up for success. If you start doing that, I can guarantee you Fort Worth ISD won't be leading in the nation for highest student enrollment. Thank you.
Stephanie Nevarrez will be followed by Abraham Nevarrez, will be followed by Angel Nevarrez.
Hello, Board and Superintendent. My name is Stephanie. I am a community member that was newly awakened to the fight for our younger generation in public schools. I can credit this to you breaking the law, having HealthSmart being taught in our schools. I want to let you know that we will not stop fighting until we see you do what the community is asking you to do. We are asking for simple things: be transparent. We are asking that you follow the law. We are asking that you notify the parents in the process. As a believer, I know one day I will have account for every decision I make, and I know you will too. So start thinking about the consequences your decisions have on our community and the children.
Abraham Nevarrez will be followed by Angel Nevarrez, and the final will be Trinidad Nevarrez, who requires a translator.
My name is Abraham, and I am representing Gen C today. When I say we are not your puppets, we are now just your people who think... Who... Camera start. Okay. My name is Abraham, and I am representing Gen C today when I say we are not your puppets. We are now just young people you think could push your political agendas on. We have a voice of ourselves, and we are going to start to use it. I want to say that I don't appreciate you telling me what my struggle should be because of my race, or that I am oppressed because of my roots. Much less do I want you to tell me that I could be whatever gender I want when I know what gender I am. HealthSmart and the ideas behind it are causing confusion in our classrooms. You're causing young people to be insecure in their own bodies. You're causing us to believe science and the facts are evil when in fact they are true. I am asking you to do a better job and to remove HealthSmart from our schools.
Hello. My name is Andrew. I am a senior in high school, and I just wanted to remind the Board of their job today. Your job is to make sure I get properly educated. I get mad when I heard that less than 33% of students in my grade can read at the grade level. If the statistic is fact, it is also a fact that you are not doing your job. To me, it looks like you look at us like money signs and your pieces to play in your money-making game. I do not want these statistics like that, like the one I just mentioned, to define my generation. I am speaking up for those students who are too shy or simply uninformed that think their failure is at their fault. It is not. It is your job. It is yours for not doing your job and for making it hard for the parents to do their job. Please do your job and do it right, because us young people are watching and getting ready to vote in the upcoming months.
Trinidad Nevarrez will be followed by Krista Gaypan.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Trinidad Nevarrez, y soy madre de siete hijos que vivimos aquí en el distrito de Fort Worth. Puesto que es muy difícil para una madre con siete hijos de estar al... asistir a todos los eventos de la escuela como lo que involucra pues todo banda atletismo. Estar al día con lo que se les está enseñando a nuestros hijos en este distrito pues resulta un poco complicado para mí. Y pues aún así trato de estar al día. Pero ustedes lo complican más al no hacerlo accesible para nosotros. Pues yo sugiero, yo sugiero que esto lo hagan más fácil para nosotros, los padres como yo, que pues debido a las obligaciones de los hijos, del hogar, criar a siete hijos no es nada fácil y como les digo menos estar al día con todo. Entonces mi sugerencia es que esto lo hagan más fácil para nosotros. Que nos tengan al día, al día de cada cambio, cada cosa que vaya a ocurrir. Y yo como contribuyente de taxes de todo que exijo yo que se nos tome en cuenta antes de tomar decisiones. Pues muchas gracias. Es todo lo que yo quería decir.
My name is Trinidad. I am a mother of seven children. As busy, as a busy mother, I know how hard it is to attend all band concert basketball games, science fairs, award ceremonies, track meetings, maintain a home, and still on top of that be informed of all the curriculum that is being taught to my children. With that being said, it is hard enough for parents to be up to date with all the changes that happen in this district. And you make it harder by not making curriculum accessible to us parents. Why do I need to beg for you guys to send me a copy of a curriculum you guys say is completely legal and appropriate? I am here to ask the Board and Superintendent to stop making it difficult for parents to be informed. It is our taxpayer right to see the school curriculum we pay for.
Krista Gaypan will be followed by Valeria Nevarrez, will be followed by Donna Collins.
Good evening. My name is Krista Gaytan, and I am a mother of two children. And I am here to say that as a parent and as many other parents, we want to be involved in knowing more about our children's education. We have been made out to believe that we can trust and should trust the educational system altogether, only to realize that we should and need to continue showing up for these children. With that being said, as a parent, we are asking to be notified and involved in the process of implementing new ed courses in the school district. We are asking for other sex education options and that you involve us in the process altogether. Thank you.
Valeria Nevarrez will be followed by Donna Collins, will be followed by Jason Penya.
Hello, Board. My name is Valeria Nevarrez. I am aware that HealthSmart is not on the agenda, but that just motivates us to keep coming out. We are letting you know sexualizing our children is bad. We don't need an agenda... agenda... agendized item for us to come out and say that you sexualizing our children is bad. And we will keep coming every single month until you start listening to us and really getting something that is age-appropriate and that should be accessible to all of us out here. It's a school night. These kids need to be asleep by eight, but we are out here because you have made it known to us that we cannot trust you with our children's health. If you sexualize our children, academics doesn't really matter. If you rob their innocence, what is academics? We are trying to work with you. We are trying to partner with you. And please just listen to us. We do not want HealthSmart. Give us more options to look at. Our tax-paying dollars give us this right. We should even be able to look at it. I had to file a Publix record request to look at this curriculum. That's ridiculous. This should be stuff that should be sent home, should be even put online, our canvas or something. But you guys are making it so hard on us parents. I guarantee you, we're going to keep coming every single month. And yes, you woke a sleeping giant, like someone said. More than that, you awaken the body of Christ, and we are not okay with this. Us as believers, we're going to stand up. We're going to keep coming every month until you listen to us. So we are asking you, please partner with us. We believe... I believe education is essential. Education is beautiful if it is done correctly. I believe everyone should go off and learn whatever they want. But if you guys are injecting these things that are bad for our children, we don't want this. Why do you think that so many moms, even in this crowd, pulled their kids from Fort Worth ISD? We want Fort Worth ISD to thrive. I love Fort Worth. I want this to be a place where kids want to come. So please, partner with us, listen to us. We want to work with you. Thank you.
Hello, I am Donna Collins, a resident of Fort Worth and a taxpayer who have grandchildren that will be going to the Fort Worth Independent School District. I want to thank you first. I enjoyed seeing the slides on academic process... progress and the panel discussions and open forums. I think those are very good platforms. But I wanted to speak out about the Ohio State Community and Youth Collaborative Institute surveys. I didn't have a problem with the teacher and parent surveys. However, our children and grandchildren come to school for academics. This survey, rather than dealing with academics, is social in nature. And furthermore, we don't send them to school as a profit center for Fort Worth ISD, which has been pointed out by previous speakers. I don't believe that a K... I don't know what reading level kids start to be able to read very well, but I know that K through some level in elementary can't even read these surveys. Yes, they can see the happy faces and the no's and the, you know, and so on and so forth, but they can't read the surveys. So the teachers... Can the teachers perhaps influence the answers as they read these surveys to these students that are not able to read them on their own? In summary, I don't support the OSU Community and Youth Collaborative Institute surveys. I also want to add, since I have a few minutes, that I disagree with the HealthSmart curriculum. I hope you follow our seminarian's advice and find something that is appropriate to the Judeo-Christian values of our community. Also, I want to say, I am very sorry about the student that was killed from Pascal, but I do want to say that firearms are not the leading cause of youth death. People with firearms are the leading cause. Thank you.
Jason Penya. Carlos Tercios. Daniela Berrientos. Carlos Tercios will be followed by Daniela Berrientos, will be followed by Meredith Bowman.
Good evening, school board members, Chairman, President, and Superintendent Ramsey. I do want to thank you all for actually not having the vote for HealthSmart today, even though it's not part of the agenda for today, of course. But I want you all to, of course, listen to the community and especially to the Hispanic community, since we are 63% of Fort Worth ISD. Nosotros somos sesenta y tres por ciento de la población aquí de la ciudad de Fort Worth. So nos tienes que escuchar todo el tiempo porque nosotros somos la mayoría. Nosotros somos este el gran gigante de esta ciudad. So y'all need to listen to us. HealthSmart is... The one that y'all have is not productive, is not appropriate. Removes male and female. It has gender fluidity. It has all of this woke stuff that frankly, a lot of parents here do not approve. You go to this back community, you show them that, they're going to be saying, "¿Qué diablos es esto? ¿Qué es esto? Esto es locura. Nomás hay dos géneros. Hay hombre y una mujer. Fue una creación de Dios. Nomás hay dos géneros." You show this to any parent, even immigrants in general, they're going to disapprove of this. So look back, remove all of that garbage, because it is garbage at the end of the day. It is not science, ladies and gentlemen. It is social justice activism that needs to be removed. You need to call out. You need to listen to us. And if you truly support equity, you're going to listen to la comunidad hispanoamericana porque nosotros somos la mayoría en esta ciudad. Nosotros somos los que podemos votar y hacer un gran cambio en este distrito. So remove HealthSmart, do not approve it in the next couple of months. It is not productive. It is not appropriate for our students. Stop sexualizing our kids and start putting Fort Worth first. Start actually educating our students and not focusing on social justice activism at the end of the day. Stop HealthSmart, listen to us, and actually do your work. Thank you.
Daniela. Daniela Berrientos will be followed by Meredith Bowman will be followed by Gabriela Cedillo.
Good evening, Board. As a Mexican-American, I know two things. My right of freedom of speech and that it's never a good idea to get a Latina mom angry, especially when it comes to her kids. Am I right? There is a lot of fired up Latino parents in this place right now, and we will keep showing up more and more each time. We will call our friends, we will call everybody we know. We will not back down. We don't want HealthSmart, and what we want is for you to start involving the parents in your process of choosing and revising their curriculum. Do not leave the parents in the dark. There has been a lack of transparency and meetings being canceled where we were going to get a chance to review the curriculum. If it's age appropriate, then why are you hiding it from parents? Why do we have to file an open records request to view this safe and legal curriculum? We are tired of being kept in the dark. We want to be in the know. How do new curriculums, curriculums get picked? What are the options? Are you notifying all the parents? What does the community have to say about this? I represent a community of Hispanic parents and students, and I'm here to make our voice known that we don't want HealthSmart and we want to be involved in the whole curriculum process. We want transparency. Thank you.
Meredith Bowman will be followed by Gabriela Cedillo will be followed by Allison Kelly.
Good evening. I would like to lift up a prayer for the Pascal community after what happened last Friday. Psalm 133:1, "How truly wonderful it is to see brothers and sisters living together in sweet unity." I pray we get to a place of unity soon. This evening, I'd like to address concerns I have for the future of Fort Worth ISD and public schools in Texas overall. Last week, I read an article about what is happening in Houston ISD. It appears to me that Fort Worth ISD is quite possibly headed in the same direction. We have had nine resignations in admin since March 2022. The list goes in no particular order. A board trustee, superintendent, chief financial officer, chief legal officer, who is believed to be working for the school board's attorney's firm, isn't that a conflict of interest? Chief Office Officer of Capital Improvement Program, is she working for Pacidio? Isn't that the firm managing the billion dollar bond? Interesting if true. Fort Worth ISD Chief of Equity and Excellence, Public Information Coordinator, Superintendent's Executive Assistant, Officer of Administrative Services, who had been demoted to Executive Director Title IX Officer, he resigned quietly in September but is still on payroll, along with a few others who have resigned. Questions as to why he left had to do with another employee, but that's a talk for another time. Apparently, many in working with Capital Improvement Program will be leaving soon as the 2017 bond will be closing out. The Chief of Operations was intending to resign but has retracted his decision. Why was that decision retracted? And is he doing two jobs? How is standing in as chief in Capital Improvement and still working as chief in operations? Is that considered another conflict of interest with the billion dollar bond that just was passed? Since the former superintendent has resigned, we haven't heard much about his whereabouts. What is he doing now? With all these resignations, there are so many questions. We know Fort Worth ISD is in financial trouble, but is this the beginning of a takeover by TEA? Or is this the beginning of going charter, since we already have had several?
Thank you. Gabriela Cedillo will be followed by Allison Kelly will be followed by Katherine Higgin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gabriela Cedillo. I am a mother of two children, as you see here behind me. My oldest, he's a sixth grader. Thank God, he's not in a public school as of we speak now. I have taken them out, out of public schools, just to homeschool them. I do have others, I guess you can call me a second mother of other children that are in your district in Fort Worth, that our parents are very concerned, as you've heard, even explaining this curriculum that you guys are trying to adopt, you know. It, I do think it's an effect for their mental health, and I do believe if you guys do decide or want to adopt this curriculum, I really do believe you're going to be complying with these people's mental health. Because there's only two genders, there's nothing in between, nothing, these lies that we, you're compromising with the lies of what the new generation is trying to brainwash, in other words. So another thing, if this doesn't stop here, what other things what you guys will do behind our backs? As us parents, we are concerned, we want to have our, feel that safeness of our children's being in public schools. You know, being okay like as parents and, you know, teachers to work together, you know, because our main focus is the children, the new generation, right? But my main concern too is if this, if there's things that are not, if you guys are not being transparent, but this is very hard for us to trust you guys with our children, for their next generation, because that's very important to me, or, and also for other parents as well. And if it doesn't stop here, what else could be next that y'all can do behind our backs? Letting kids have, what is it, like puberty blockers, you know, things like that? You know, you guys do have also abortion clinics and, you know, places that, you know, in East Side or, you know.
Time, thank you.
Thank you. Allison Kelly will be followed by Katherine Higgin will be followed by Jacob Ornalis.
Thank you, Boards, Boards, sorry, Board Superintendent. My name is Allison Kelly, and I'm a mom of four children that were in Fort Worth ISD. I'm also the executive director of a nonprofit that has worked for the last 11 years with 30 of your Fort Worth ISD schools. I'm deeply invested in Fort Worth ISD, and I love the students. And I could go on and speak, like so many have articulated about the HealthSmart curriculum and how I'm asking you to please not adopt it. I'm almost having deja vu, because I've stood here for the last 10 years, and there's different faces and different names, a different superintendent. I've asked you to please not consider using, having children use the bathroom that their gender doesn't identify with. I have also asked, five years ago, that you remove this HealthSmart curriculum when I discovered it in my son's sixth grade classroom. At that time, I was not allowed to see the curriculum, and the PE and the Health Department, they were not operating under transparency, and we brought it to light. And here we are, surprisingly, seven years later, and you're attempting to adopt the same horrific curriculum. I don't understand it. I'm asking you to please reconsider. I had the privilege, I guess, to sit on the Student Health Advisory Council. Every ISD across the nation must create a Shack Council. My Latino parents and parents out there, you have the right to be on this. It is made up of community volunteers and parents, and you select the health curriculum. When I got on this committee, it was a kangaroo court, and that curriculum was selected behind closed doors, and it was not voted on correctly.
Time, thank you.
Thank you. Katherine Higgin will be followed by Jacob Ornalis will be followed by Joe Palmer.
Hi, I'm a lifetime resident of Fort Worth and a grandparent of a child in Fort Worth ISD. Earlier this month, I attended the Fort Worth ISD Shack meeting at O.D. Wyatt. My understanding was that they were going to allow those who attended to look at the curriculum. We were told about the curriculum, but we were not allowed to actually see it. Apparently, and I guess you've heard other people say this, you have to file a FOIA request in order to see the curriculum that's going to be taught, your child, and only parents can see it, not grandparents. They were folk, the people that were with HealthSmart, the group that was there, they were more focused on having a high rate of participation in this program than the content itself. I personally am more concerned about the actual content, what is being taught to the students. They say they want to honor parents, their parents' decisions, and be fully transparent to the parents. But it doesn't appear they want parents to know at all what's being taught. Parents are only allowed to view their students' workbooks, but they are not allowed to see the teacher's information, which is a digital curriculum on their computer. They are not being transparent. There are many things discussed in this curriculum that a parent should know before their child, children take this class, so that they are able to talk with their children, or if desired, remove them from the class. Thank you.
Jacob Ornalis will be followed by Joe Palmer will be followed by Amy Super.
My name is Jacob Ornalis, and I am with the most effective grassroots organization in America, TPUSA Faith, and I am also a Fort Worth taxpayer. The idea that gender identification is now a personal choice might sound enlightened to some, but it's actually a very anti-scientific view of one of the most essential facts of life. Men and women are inherently different. Their brains are different, their hormones, their chromosomes, and of course, their bodies are different. No amount of peer-reviewed papers from gender studies departments can change the timeless truth of Genesis 5, that God created mankind male and female, and He blessed them. But that won't stop the progressive activists who run Fort Worth ISD from trying to change basic biological truths. For their efforts, Fort Worth students and taxpayers will pay an especially high price. Fort Worth ISD should vote against the advanced sexual education curriculum, as it openly defies the basic laws of nature and of nature's God. For the small percentage of individuals who experience gender dysphoria, we should have nothing but compassion, but we do not need to overturn biologically defined sex differences to do so. Board members who vote in the implementation of HealthSmart are directly fueling the transgender industrial complex, confusing our children and continuing the erosion of parental rights in education. It is not the role of a teacher, administrator, coach, counselor, or school board to discuss advanced concepts surrounding sex and gender with minors. It is not the role of Fort Worth ISD to data mine our children through surveys. I urge you to vote against the adoption of HealthSmart in Fort Worth ISD and remind you of Jesus's words in Matthew 18. If anyone causes one of these little ones to stumble, it would be better for them to have a large millstone hung around their neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea. And because I still have 15 seconds, I would like to address a logical fallacy surrounding gun violence in schools. Gun-free zones will not keep our students safe. Single points of entry and armed teachers and administrators will. Thank you and God bless.
Joe Palmer will be followed by Amy Super will be followed by Elva Camacho.
I'm going to first ask the board to pull from the consent agenda items PQ, RNS. I'm asking for no votes on cosmetic changes to cafeterias, sound and lighting, and auditoriums, and all other expenditures at this time that are not essential to learning. Regarding the change order for the track overhaul at Pascal, the contractor wants $225,000 more dollars due to the condition of the asphalt. This is a large enough amount to warrant putting the additional repair out for bid again. Why do you cultivate an atmosphere in which vendors bid low to get the job, discover hidden issues, then automatically get that extra work? Regarding the debt level of the school district, for a few years now, there's been a concern about the rate of increase in passage of school bond debt and how this increase is outpacing the permanent school fund for the last, the last 12 years. As you may know, the permanent school fund guarantees virtually all ISD bond debt in the state. According to an Austin American Stateman article published last week, a Texas PSF bond program this month rejected an Austin ISD request to act as its guarantor for school bonds that the district scheduled to sell this Wednesday. The rejection could be one of many for the fund, which is this year nearing its federally set cap on how much public school bond money it can back. Districts must get insurance to back their school bond sales, which guarantees to investors that the district will pay back the money. For years, the permanent school fund has acted as school district's guarantor, but the state-run program is nearing its $117 billion federally set limit. Without the state guarantee, the Austin district could pay up to $20 million in extra insurance and interest to guarantee its bond sales for projects in November bond proposition. Item three in this recent document released by Bastrop ISD confirms this affecting districts all over the state. The projected interest rate assumes that the debt obligations will not be guaranteed by the permanent school fund due to a lack of capacity in the fund. What does it mean? School districts unable to rely on the guarantee of the permanent school fund will be burdening their constituents with interest rates well into the double digits. You issued some bonds three months ago at nine or 10% with the PSF guarantee. I'm calling for a motion from this board to stop all but the most necessary expenditures until we have a clear understanding of what it's going to cost to borrow money in the coming months. If the interest rate is going...
Thank you. Amy Super. Amy Super. Amy will be followed by Elva Camacho. That's, that's one warning, Mr. Palmer. Would you like two, or would you like to sit down, sir? Please remove Mr. Palmer. Thank you. I ask you if you'd like to sit down, or if you'd like to stay. Please leave. Thank you. Ms. Super. I'm be, I'm asking you to leave. I warned you, and now I'm asking you to leave. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Ms. Super.
I was pleased to see our Fort Worth ISD superintendent speak before the Fort Worth City Council today. I'm seeking clarification from you, Dr. Ramsey, on a couple of statements you made in an effort to better understand this quote "system, not a program" unquote you referred to. Tell me more about this quote-unquote strategic plan you mentioned today, and more specifics about something you called, quote, "a process of a profile of a learner." You described this as, quote, "something that would allow the district to determine what our community wants our students to be," unquote. I seriously hope the data used to put together your strategic plan, it's not information obtained from surveys generated from the items on tonight's agenda, already talked about by a few other people, and that you are recommending the board approve. You also made an interesting statement twice, which was, quote, "we need to stop admiring the problem and start working on the solutions," unquote. I can assure you that neither myself nor any of the people in this room have ever admired the problems that this district has, but we sure have asked you to find some, some solutions. You also might want to, or I'd also like qualification about something you spoke of, the knowledge gap. And in doing so, you described demographics of our district in a way I've not heard before. You said, quote, "our communities are almost 90% black and indigenous peoples of color." Every time our district administration provides measurable data reports on how our students are doing, they choose to break the data down by many racial, ethnic groups, far more than just the two you described. Will our Hispanic, Latino, Asian, Pacific Islander, American Indian, and mixed-race students all be lumped together in future district reports into what you called indigenous peoples of color? You might seriously want to reconsider that one. Lastly, the data from the student outcomes report presented to this board in July of 2022 don't match the ones on the TEA site. Even though they both state what this district administration presented and what the TEA is reporting are measurements of the same data, star performance, comparing the same timeframes, 2019 data to 2021, surely your district is not giving us different data than what you're giving TEA? Tell me that's not the case. Do better.
Time, thank you.
Thank you. Elva Camacho.
Hi, good evening, board members and trustees. My name is Elva Camacho. I am a resident of Fort Worth. I grew up in the South Side, and though I have many titles and lots of community service, I did have a speech that I was going to talk about, but I can't do it after hearing all these comments about people. The title I'm using tonight, that I'm proud of, that I was nominated for, I am the president of the Tarrant County Republican Hispanic Assembly. And I am here to tell you tonight that we are not going away. We are an organization of morals. Where have our morals gone, Fort Worth ISD? I am a product of a, of a public education. I came to, I went to Worth Heights, I went to Rosemont, I went to Pascal. Rest in peace, that poor kid, and blessings for his family. Our morals, I'm talking about family, God, country, the Pledge of Allegiance, those classics that are lacking in our Fort Worth ISD. And you know why? I'm going to share my second title. You know how I know that? Because I'm a substitute teacher for this school, and I work my butt off every single day. I can sit here and tell you that 95-plus percent of my jobs come pre-arranged through teachers and the relationships that I've developed with each and every one of them. And these curriculums that I'm hearing and I'm seeing, and it is not in the best interest of our children. Children, they don't want that. I see it firsthand. I can share bunches of stories of, of different ethnic, and, and the diversity in the ethnic part that I see every day. Kids aren't worried about the sexualization and if they're boy or girl, they know that. Their parents have taught them that. Their biggest thing that they're worried about, all they want to do is... Their biggest thing that they're worried about, all they want to do-
Thank you. Jessica Chau. Followed by Gallo, or Gallo Chau, followed by Haley Sinclair, and the final speaker is Miriam Lambert. Is Jessica present? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Jessica Chau, as you well heard, and I'm a mother of three, and I really have a zeal to equip the next generation for our, to fulfill the purpose. I have a zeal for them to grow up knowing and being confident in who they are. And I recently heard about this curriculum that was being exposed to HealthSmart. And honestly, I'm appalled, I'm shocked. It's abhorrent, it is disgusting that we would consider to actually teach this to our children. This is information that has nothing to do with education. I'm also an elementary school teacher. I teach pre-K, I'm sorry, I teach kindergarten and first grade, and this has nothing to do with their education. It only desensifies children to expose them to material that they are not ready for, that they do not need to know in that manner. And you know what? We are here to stand and we're here to say, this is not okay. We will not be okay with this. It is not okay in our city, it's not okay in our state, and it's not okay in our country, or anywhere. Children should not be exposed to this, and I'm sure you understand this, and we will not stand for it. Not only has the Hispanic people awakened, but I believe the community, people who stand for truth, people who stand for family, people who stand for values, have awakened, but also, and most importantly, the church has awakened. And we're here to stay. Thank you so much.
Gallo Chau will be followed by Haley Sinclair, will be followed by our final speaker, Miriam Lambert.
Good evening. My name is Gallo Chau. I'm here in front of you as a concerned parent, and also as an educator. I have been in education for 15 years. I'm a parent of three, 12-year-old, 11-year-old, 9-year-old. They are my wife and myself's most valuable gifts and biggest responsibilities. Their innocence is precious and I want to protect it, just as the majority of the parents that love their children unconditionally. Innocence is a treasure that children have, and I don't want a curriculum to come and steal it from them. Even movies have ratings. The content of this curriculum will be rated PG, PG-13, and even R. That means parental guidance and parental guidance for children over 13, or even not appropriate for anyone who's not an 18-year-old adult. It has no place in elementary schools at all. Content is not appropriate for middle schools either. I would even not consider it high school appropriate. It needs parental guidance. Educating our children in their sexuality is a family matter. It's something beautiful that parents can guide their children through the different stages. Yes, sometimes we get nervous, but it's part of creating those bonds of love, unity, and trust in the family. Educating our children in their sexuality is something that we don't want our school system to steal from the parents. I don't want a society where children's innocence is lost. I want a society where the purity and beauty of our children's innocence is protected and is preserved, where my children and their children, friends, can still play and have pure innocent conversations with other children. Forward ISD. Protect our children's innocence. Keep their minds pure. Keep this content out of our schools. Thank you.
Haley Sinclair would be followed by Miriam Lambert.
Hello. My name is Haley Sinclair, and I'm the co-chair for the School Health Advisory Committee. I'm also a full-time tenured nurse faculty and an emergency medicine nurse. I just have a couple questions. I know you cannot respond, but I think that they're important. First, how will the parents who opted in their children into sexual education last semester be informed that their children did not receive the education they requested? How and when will the parents who opted in their children this semester be notified that their children will not receive the sexual education that they chose for their children? I have spoken with several of you about the curriculum, and no one is able to clarify how the updated TECS will be met using the old curriculum. This is very concerning, but unfortunately, I don't feel like my concern is shared with the board. Fort Worth ISD was the first district in the state to adopt a non-discrimination statement, which includes protection for LGBTQ plus students, and we are now moving backwards. How many of the people that spoke tonight live within Fort Worth ISD? Many of them claim to have come and seen the curriculum, but I ask that you please take the time to investigate that. Who has come to see the curriculum? Who cares enough to come and see the curriculum? I understand their concerns about difficulty seeing the curriculum. I too have had a meeting canceled to see the curriculum with another parent. We do not share much of the same ideology, but we do share a strong mistrust in this board. We have a pregnancy rate in Fort Worth ISD middle schools. There is a continual explosion of sexually transmitted disease among our adolescents. By not providing sexual education to students, you are leaving them to learn from the internet and their peers. The Shack has met all of your demands to add new members, to vote again, to have additional meetings.
Time. Thank you. Thank you. Miriam Lambert.
Hi. I'm back. As you plan ahead for the continued improvement of reading and math skills, remember that repetition and handwriting, not keyboards, are two critical elements, and they're two free tools to help learn these skills. Fort Worth ISD has some great teachers, but their hands are tied when trying to maintain classroom order. Lack of order contributes to low math and reading skills. It also contributes to violence. You must have discipline. Another contributor to low scores are distractions. The distractions are a means to prohibit transparency. The newest distraction is the agenda of pushing the false concept of gender fluidity. Gender fluidity is not a valid teaching objective, and the abundance of pronouns is a distraction that would be laughable if it wasn't so wrong. Everyone here is made up of XX or XY chromosomes. This is true science. Each person is created in the image of God, a God of order, not chaos. So reject false science. Teach reading and math. Teach truth. Teach discipline. Teach hard work and teach respect. Then Fort Worth ISD will graduate emotionally healthy adults that can function in an ever-changing world. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our public comment. Thank you each for sharing your thoughts this evening. At this time, we'll move to number eight on our agenda, discussion of consent agenda items. As board president, I'm making the following statement in accordance with the board policy, BBFA Local. This is a reminder to each board member of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements you may have for matters under consideration on the agenda for this meeting. If required by law, board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. Are there any questions or comments concerning consent agenda items this evening? Trustee Michael Ryan.
President Jackson, I'd like to move item D, the approved memorandum of understanding with Ohio State University Community and Youth Collaborative Institute, to the action agenda, please.
Item D from consent to action agenda has been moved. Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Any other comments or concerns? The time is 8:30 PM. The date is Tuesday, January 24, 2023. We will now recess and reconvene for executive session as authorized by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code under Check Zunes 551, 071, 24, and 6. as authorized by chapter five five one of the Texas government code under statutes five five one zero seven one, two, four, and six.
Thank you.
In accordance with the open meetings law, this board opened the meeting at 5:30 PM with a quorum present recessed and reconvened. Open session adjourned regular session convened executive session adjourned executive session. Now we've reconvened open session at 9:46 PM with a quorum present. Do I have a motion accepting the consent agenda? Trustee Dar moved trustee Ryan with the second. Any discussion seeing and hearing none?
President Jackson?
Yes, trustee Dar.
That is just a reminder that that removed item trustee Ryan removed item D.
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember the letter. So as I have I have moved to approve the consent agenda item minus item D.
Yes, thank you. Okay trustee Dar has moved removing D trustee Ryan has seconded any other discussion seeing and hearing none would we like to move to voting please? And the consent agenda passes unanimously moving on to fourteen action items. Dr Ramsey would you like to remove anything?
Yes, thank you administration would like to pull from the agenda the removed item D.
Thank you. And we will move on now to action item B do I have a motion to accept the personnel recommendations discussed during executive session. Dr Ramsey I'll hand that off to you to announce the assistant general counsel and associate superintendent.
Thank you. As the board is aware we have two new positions there are not there's a reorganization in legal we have an assistant general counsel and the recommendation is for Sidney Pounds and for the associate superintendent of curriculum instruction that is an open position is not new to the district and that would be Charles Garcia.
Okay and I move do I have a second trustee Martinez any discussion seeing and hearing none let's move to voting. And the motion passes unanimously we look forward to both of these individuals being introduced formally at an upcoming meeting. Moving to fifteen E consider and take action to rescind the October 25 2022 adoption of approved purchase of equipment and services for firearm replacements and approved new purchase of equipment services for fire alarm and replacements do I have a motion? Thank you trustee Phillips moves and I have a second from trustee Bridges. Any questions seeing and hearing none let's move to voting. And the motion passes unanimously with the board's approval I would like to take items F G H I and J and K in one item do I have a motion? Trustee Ryan with the motion second trustee Phillips any questions or discussions? Let's move to voting please. And those are all moved and item L Dr Ramsey would you like to discuss that passes unanimously by the way and Dr Ramsey for item L?
Yes, we would like to pull item L these are the three calendars we spoke with our seven different advisories and received feedback we received additional feedback after the meetings and out of that consideration we made some changes the the major change or difference would be when the holiday the Christmas break falls and so what we would like to do is to get additional feedback of the original calendar that was presented and then the new calendar with a change of when the Christmas break is and put that out we're gonna put information out this evening we'll put it in that Friday weekly update that goes out so we can ask our community what their feedback is and that's really for two reasons one is because we have childcare issues we have a lot of employees that may live in another school district and other school districts we want to make sure that we're aligned with them primarily and we also want to take into consideration we said we would take the feedback of those advisories and we want to honor that commitment. So the plan is to take feedback we will provide information out this evening Friday we'll also do it Monday for our staff and then we will bring it back at the February the first meeting which will be a special board meeting for action for the board.
Thank you Dr Ramsey and I would thank you for that proactive approach and for also lining it out so that everyone understands including viewing audience at this time we will move on to comments by board members.
Can I ask a question about the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Calendars for clarification that will come back to the board for a vote on February fourteenth is that correct?
Yes ma'am, I think the fourteenth is correct.
And the only thing that's being changed is the winter break the start and end dates I know that people are trying to plan summer vacations and camps for kids and childcare and and all that so.
So the yes and because the of the change of that winter break in the new iteration that does push when we would come back and then it allows us to have a day an additional student free day in April so now which was a consideration and feedback that we received from all the stakeholder groups that every other month had a day built in that where it was a student holiday and now we will have an additional one where in April there will be the first iteration there was not a day off and so it's the winter break and then that one day in April.
Okay, so when you say it'll push when we come back you're talking about after winter break?
Correct, so just like this year the calendar the way where Christmas and New Year's fall the two options are either to end early and come back really early right after New Year's or the second option which is what we're putting out as well is staying a little bit later closer to that Christmas Eve date but then moving the break to end so getting the entire first week of January off and we will have those calendars up so that everyone can see and compare them when they're making when they're providing us input.
Last question I've received a lot of feedback from educators that they really appreciated having a workday the day before the winter break begins and a workday the day after the winter break ends not a PD day but workdays that that bookmark or that's not it bookend the the winter break will that still be in the calendar?
So there are there are days built into the calendar and we did hear so just for kind of the viewing public as well we had the district advisory committee also the the district education educator committee the five superintendent advisories are one for support staff one for teachers one for parents one for community members business leaders and then a student advisory and so we we actually got feedback on all of them and so that sometimes there are some consensions we have to make keeping the instructional minutes when school starts and we always want to end before that Memorial Day break but they did give that us that feedback as well and while I remember on the January I'm gonna punt to the deputy superintendent on the December before we leave.
Sure, both versions that you'll see posted still have the teacher prep day at the end of the semester and then when we return from winter break in January so both versions still include those two days.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you for answering my questions.
Okay, are there any comments from the trustees trustee Lubanos?
Thank you President Jackson. I want to thank so many in the public for reaching out to our Pasco community during this recent tragedy I must acknowledge the leadership of Pasco principal Trent Langston and his leadership team during this time no one can imagine the stress and difficulty this has represented to them and to the incredible sadness of losing a student and seeing another one in the hospital. There was a moment of silence for seventeen year old Sakaria Trevinu who lost his life in the senseless act of violent violence and for students who remain for a student who remains remains in the hospital with her injuries. They must lead up their families at this difficult time. I want to thank University United Methodist Church for organizing a vigil last night outside their church and for the support they they as well other local clergy provided to their families of the victims and to our Pasco parents students and staff. Thanks also to central administration and to Dr Ramsey for supporting Pasco at this difficult time in in this week's tragedy. Finally, I want to thank the Forward Police Officers and their partners for the work in investigating and arresting the three suspects. I have spoken to Dr Ramsey about upcoming town hall meetings for Pasco parents students and staff to address this issue and of safety and security in our schools. We must work together as a community to ensure this type of violence does not occur again in Forward ISD. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Lubanos trustee Dar.
Yes, thank you trustee Lubanos. On January ninth I had the pleasure of and I believe there's some pictures to accompany my words I had the pleasure of attending the ribbon cutting for the Alcon Children's Vision Center look at that it's a ribbon cutting and it was such a pleasure to be there their motto is they want to help kids see brilliantly and I agree with that because what we know for sure is that when kids cannot see clearly they cannot learn effectively that looks a little bit suspicious doesn't it? There are thousands of kids that will be served with this clinic one out of four kids have a vision disorder needing glasses or something even more serious this is Fort Worth ISD is the only ISD in Texas to have an onsite vision clinic and this will serve students across the district PK through twelve those students who cannot get to the vision clinic as easily there is a mobile vision unit that will go to them and I also want to commend Justin McDonald who is the graphic designer for Alcon who did the artwork on the outside of the building and it is absolutely spectacular the inside is equally as spectacular so thank you to Alcon for that partnership. And then finally to reiterate trustee Lubanos says thanks my family is a member of the Pasco community and the tragedy that occurred affected us personally on Friday when my daughter when I got home from work my daughter was already home from school and like I do every day when I get home from work I gave her a hug and she hugged a little tighter and I said I am so sorry that you experienced the real world firsthand today and her reply was I am so sorry that this is the real world we can do better and we must do better for our children thank you.
Thank you trustee Dar trustee Bridges.
I want to announce on January twenty sixth Thursday we'll be doing our second listening session at OD wide high school from six to seven thirty our focus is the the high school and middle schools within District Four which again is OD wide the Leadership Academy as well as Glen oh God I just went ahead of brain freeze. Thank you appreciate that so again that's this Thursday and from six to seven thirty thank you.
Thank you trustee Bridges trustee Dr Camille Rodriguez.
Yes, last Friday there was a senseless act of violence that involved two of our students one of whom sadly did not survive his injuries a parent should not send their children to school and worry if they're going to come home schools are supposed to be safe places for our children to learn and thrive sadly in some of the recent tragedies the suspects are not old enough to vote yet they obtained a firearm over the weekend I was in commun- Over the weekend, I was in communication with Dr. Ramsey and trustee Bridges, trying to make sense of it all. I know the Constitution gives us the right to free speech and the right to bear arms. We as a community need to do something to end gun violence. Parents, when you come before us to give us your thoughts on surveys and equity, please also speak up about gun control and gun violence, because a bullet does not know race or age. A person should not be able to purchase a firearm through layaway. Parents and caregivers, please safeguard your firearms to prevent them from doing harm. There have been more mass shootings in the United States than days of the year in 2023 so far. That is not okay. Please contact the governors, senators, and representatives and tell them this is not okay. Students, please understand your actions while in school can affect you for the rest of your life. Fighting because of gang-related issues, or if you feel someone was rude to you, violence is not the answer. This is part of growing up. Do not make the mistake of engaging in violence, which very well could end in death or incarceration. Please, if you are troubled or know of a friend or classmate contemplating violence or struggling with mental health, tell someone. Our schools have trained professionals who you can talk to without any judgment, you just have to reach out to someone. Parents and caregivers know that our schools are a resource for you and your family. Mental health is often not discussed in Latino families, but it is there, sadly, oftentimes just ignored. Let us learn from the tragedies of this past weekend and work together to find solutions.
Thank you. Trustee Evans?
Yes, I think I have a few pictures, all right. Last Tuesday, I had the privilege of attending the South Hills and Arlington Heights basketball game, and I had the intense privilege of witnessing Coach Tamar Sanders win her three-hundredth game as a coach. So this is a big career milestone for her, and it was just so great to watch, and so great to watch our girls team be a part of that win for her, so I just wanted to congratulate her, her staff, and the girls' team. Fort Worth ISD is so proud of Coach Sanders and thanks her for all the hard work that she does. Earlier this evening, we saw two runners, those student athletes would not have been able to accomplish what they did without the hard work of their coaches, so I'm just so appreciative of all the, the work our, our coaching staff does.
Trustee Martinez?
I had the privilege to join MH Moore Elementary this week in their Readers Become Leaders kickoff, and wanted to just express that gratitude to Mr. Alvarez and Ms. Myers and the entire team, Mr. Jerry Moore for being there, also to Mayor Parker, NCAA, TCU Athletics, and Forward Sports Commission for putting on just a energetic, exciting kickoff to this reading program that I know that students are really excited about. I have already heard of like internal competitions between schools, last year, our students at Fort Worth ISD read fourteen million minutes over ten weeks as part of this competition, and then the winning schools were, had a field trip to the NCAA gymnastics finals, and so I know that a lot of our campuses are excited about that, but I wanted to just express my gratitude and celebrate all that were involved in the kickoff, because it was a phenomenal event that really energized students. And then, secondly, I wanted to also just express my sincere thanks to the entire community that has pulled together in the light of the tragic event of us losing a student, a Pasco student, and I also wanted to recognize the Boy Scouts, Troop Nine, Fort Worth, who were also on parking lot duty at the prayer vigil this week, and so I just want to thank them for their service and helpfulness, and thank you to all the community who has come together and continue to keep your thoughts and prayers with this family.
Thank you. Trustee Bridges? Oh, okay, okay, and in honor of the senseless loss of life of Zachariah Trevino, we will close this meeting tonight in his honor, we're adjourned at ten, ten oh five PM.